Well, good afternoon and welcome to the City Planning Commission's special meeting. Mr. Singer, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon. This is a City Planning Commission special meeting held in New York City, City Planning Commission Hearing Room, Lower Concourse 120 Broadway. Today is Monday, August 6, 2018, and the time is 1:05. I will now call the roll. Chair Lago?
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
He's here.
I know he's here. Commissioner Capelli?
Here.
Commissioner Cirillo?
Here.
Commissioner De La Ouz?
Here.
Commissioner Dweck?
Here.
Commissioner Edie?
Here.
Commissioner Efron?
Here.
Commissioner Knight?
Here.
Commissioner Levin?
Here.
Commissioner Marin?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
A quorum is present. Let's turn to page one of the calendar, Reports Section, Borough of Brooklyn, Calendar numbers 1, 2, and 3, CD2. Calendar number 1, C180216ZMK. Calendar number 2, N180217ZRK. Calendar number 3, C180218ZSK. In the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments and for the grant of a special permit concerning 80 Flatbush Avenue rezoning, for favorable reports on calendar numbers 1, 2, and 3, Chair Lago?
I'd like to explain why I am so pleased to vote yes on this project. This is an absolutely singular site located in the heart of my beloved downtown Brooklyn. It is the very definition of transit-rich. On any list of the top five most transit-rich sites, Atlantic Terminal is counted among them. It's also along Flatbush Avenue. Flatbush Avenue isn't just a wide street, it is a major and very heavily-traveled trucking route through the city. Now, at the same time, we have to recognize that this site is adjacent to the Borum Hill neighborhood, but Borum Hill, like nearby Fort Greene and also Brooklyn Heights, has long thrived as a brownstone neighborhood, living in harmony with an adjacent central business district. I want to thank the ECF and the private sector applicants for their sensitive design, which incorporates a very ambitious program, two schools, office space, retail, housing, but in a manner that respects the fact that the different sides of this full-blocked site have very different characters and has adapted appropriately. I am very much looking forward to seeing these new buildings grace the downtown Brooklyn skyline, and I vote yes.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ouz?
Recused.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Echoing the comments of the chair, I think this is a project that is good for downtown Brooklyn, good for schools, and good for New York. I'm very pleased to vote yes.
Commissioner Efron?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
To the average observer of the New York City skyline, 80 Flatbush is like a billionaires' row building arriving at the edge of brownstone Brooklyn. But unlike the billionaires' row super-talls, which are simply making clever if aggressive use of zoning that's been on the books for decades, 80 Flatbush requires public action to create the necessary zoning. Our fingerprints will be on this one, and we have to be sure we get it right. Looked at individually, I agree completely with our chair about the important features of this project. Each individual element of the plan is worthy: affordable housing, two new schools, preservation of historic structures, cultural space, office space, improved streetscape, commercial space, and lots of density located near lots of transit. The development team has indeed done an admirable job of putting all of this together in a thoughtful, well-conceived design, and by all accounts, has consulted extensively with the local community. But we've heard forcefully from the local community and from the borough president that the developers here may simply be being asked to accomplish too much, that these buildings are just too big, and in many respects, I agree. How did they get so big? First, by upzoning the site to a C-69 zoning district, which has a base FAR of 15, but that's not big enough, so we're being asked to allow another three FAR through a zoning text amendment. We did that two years ago at 141 Willoughby, so there's precedent for creating additional density in these high-density neighborhoods. But that was a small site in the center of the new downtown Brooklyn, and it was acknowledged that it was appropriate because of its centrality to the heart of the downtown Brooklyn neighborhood. It was given 18 FAR and no height limit for the towers. That tower is only going to be 577 feet tall. We worried then about creating a precedent for a similar maneuver in the future, but we noted then that public review would be required, so we didn't have to worry about it then. Well, here we are, but now, this time, we're at the edge of downtown Brooklyn, not at its center, and I think it has a very different context. I share the borough president's opinion that there should be a height limit here, and I agree with his suggestion that it be 600 feet. More importantly, we're also being asked to allow some significant changes to the MIH program, to reduce the amount of affordable housing that will be required and to delay the affordable housing until the second phase of the project. I think it is very unwise for us to be creating this opportunity for flexibility in the application of the MIH program. I do believe that a substantial upzoning is appropriate here, so I vote yes on the map change. I believe that's calendar number one, but for the reasons I've just stated, I'm going to abstain on items 2 and 3.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 1, 2, and 3.
And I think with that, there is no other business before the commission, and so this special meeting is closed.
Before we begin our agenda on the review session, there's a presentation by Carolyn Grossman-Marr on the Geography of Jobs.
And I'll just note that this was released last week with an event at the building congress that had present senior officials from the state of New York and numerous cities in both New York, Connecticut, and New Jersey. It has been extremely well-received, and so we thought, we were so excited about it, we wanted to share it with the commission at the first possible moment.
Thanks, Marisa. Am I on? Can we yes? Not really. There we go. Thanks, Marisa. Thanks, Ryan. And thank you, commissioners, for having the opportunity to speak today. I want to also acknowledge Derek Goldberg from the regional planning team, who is the research wizard behind much of what you're going to see today. And what you have in front of you is also available in a longer report, as the commissioner said, that was released last week, the Geography of Jobs. And just to step back for a moment, what we've done here and in our newfound regional planning division is to really try and take what we know about New York City, particularly from an economic standpoint in this report, and expand it to looking out farther, to understand New York City's context, both our jobs context and our workforce context in our larger metropolitan and even national area, so that we can both plan better effectively for the city, but also so we can work with our neighbors around the region to really plan effectively across borders for a regional economy, a regional housing market, and regional land resources. So the findings that we've released in this report are really fourfold. One is that the region is really experiencing changes in the geography of employment that are favoring New York City. We've gained much more than other parts of the region, and we're gaining much more relative to our historic patterns. Second, it's not just the number of jobs, but the composition of jobs around the region is changing, again with New York City doing much better, particularly not just Manhattan, but other boroughs concentrating higher-value sectors like office employment, while other parts of the region have really not experienced those same gains in the post-recession period. Third, we're seeing a very dramatic recentralization of our labor force, particularly in younger cohorts, into New York City as well as into other areas with transit access and proximity to New York City. And four, the combination of those two effects, the changing geography of jobs and the changing geography of our workforces, is creating new geographic disparities as those combine in different new ways in different parts of the region. So to step back and talk a little bit about what is our region, a little more than 100 years ago now, when New York City consolidated into the five boroughs, we effectively were our own region. About 90% of the then-region's population was within the borders of the newfound city. That was before we built a generation of commuter infrastructure that extended the bounds of the region much farther. So today, when we look at the region, we're looking approximately at 75 miles in every direction from City Hall besides the ocean, and this is an area that has about 23 million inhabitants. New York City is, of course, the largest inhabitant. We are at 8.6 million, by far the largest municipality. The next-largest are under 300,000, Jersey City and Newark. But we are a minority inhabitant in an area that has 14 million residents outside of New York. We're also a region that has about 9 million households. Again, just a little bit under 40% are in New York City. New York City has a little bit of the majority of renter households. We're about 55% renter region, which is very high. We're not quite the highest in the United States, but we're up there, and we think that that has a lot to do with our success as an economy and our ability to accommodate a dynamic and changing workforce. And you can see that since New York City dominates the rental market, you can also see the other geographies where we have significant concentrations of rental housing, and the darker-orange colors here predominantly in the older towns of New Jersey, as well as in old downtowns along our commuter rail corridors. And that's, of course, a product of the patterns of suburban development that have occurred over the last 100 years. And we're a region that has the largest metro economy in the United States. As Chair Lago likes to say, if we were a country unto ourselves, we would have an economy about the size of Russia. We have 10.4 million workers, about $790 billion in total wages, $1.7 trillion in GDP, which is about 10% of the U.S. total. New York City is a little bit higher. We have about 41% of jobs relative to 37% of the total population. We have about half of total wages, which, again, demonstrates New York City is obviously very large here, but there's about half of that economic activity happening outside of our borders. And it's a diverse economy that it doesn't cohere to the jurisdictional boundaries that we set a century ago. Looking here at employment by macro sector and land-use typology, so office jobs are the dark blue, institutional jobs are the yellow, we have retail jobs in green and industrial jobs in purple, you can see, well, there's a mass here. If you didn't know where New York City is, you couldn't really see the city's boundary, but there are significant concentrations. Manhattan, just tiny in here, or office concentrations here, as well as places like Parsipity, Melville, Long Island, the northeast corridors, Stamford, Bridgeport, New Haven, you can see the New Jersey Turnpike showing up in industrial. So it's a really significant concentration of an economic ecosystem that really works inside and outside of our borders to allow us to continue to grow. And what we think is there's sort of a value-chain effect in place here, where New York City skews higher in terms of its share of higher-wage and employment-dense uses like office, while other parts of the region have more land-intensive uses like industrial. And though New York City, especially Manhattan, sits, accounts for an important share, the contribution of other parts is what's enabled us all to grow over time. And you can see here the breakout, where New York City is just a little bit more than half of our office base. It's about 60% of our total wages on office space. Apologies that some of these numbers seem to be shifting here. And then we're a little bit less in terms of things like industrial, although still significant. Some of that may also include headquartering of industrial businesses. And our relationship to the rest of the region is especially true in terms of our housing resources, that allows for a population exchange between the city and the suburbs. We are net exporters of population to the suburbs, and historically, we've been the pump that sort of primes the engine of the region with new people who migrate to New York City from all across the world, and then some, today it's 1 in 3 people who leave New York City, move somewhere next door as they avail themselves of our larger regional housing choices. And those regional housing choices are also what allow our economy to remain connected, providing New York City with access to the region's workers. Today, that's about a million people who commute from our region or live outside of the borders and commute back in for work, but it also works in inverse, where we see about 415,000 people leaving New York City for economic opportunity outside of our borders. So that tremendous interrelationship is also what's allowed us to all continue to thrive. So moving into what's happening today, coming out of the recession, our metropolitan economy fared okay. We are growing at par with the national average, and we're nearly matched in scale of growth by smaller national competitors like Dallas, places like San Francisco, also growing nearly as much as us and growing at significantly higher percentages. But 700,000 is still the highest growth of an employment in the nation, and what's really buoyed that is the growth of New York City's employment base. Of the nearly 800,000 private-sector jobs that were added in our region post-recession, 3/4 were gained in New York City, significantly outpacing our 41% share of the region's total employment. So we're 41% of jobs, but we're 75% of growth in this period. The city rebounded more and faster since the recession, particularly versus a place like North Jersey, which had about 30% of the total jobs of the region, but has accounted for just 10% of the private job gains since 2008. And the pattern of the city's success during this post-recession period is dramatic, but it does follow a longer trend of recentralization of our region's employment gains. We're following the mass suburbanization of jobs, particularly to places like North Jersey that had a lot of room for suburban office campuses, as well as Long Island during the 1980s. The city has crept back over a number of economic cycles. We're 36% of job gains in the '80s, we're 44% in the '90s, we're 62% in the post-210 period, but with that 2008, it's really the trough and the crest that's allowed us to be at that higher level. And what's really tremendous in change here is the strengthening of the role of the boroughs outside of Manhattan to the region's private employment gains. Manhattan itself has ebbed and flowed, but has generally stayed about 1/4 of the region's jobs. Brooklyn, in this period, is the region's fastest-growing county by employment, increasing its employment by 40%. At 6% of the region's economy, it accounted for 22% of the region's jobs gains. We think of the bedroom communities of the region as being outside of the city, but in fact, places like the Bronx and the Queens have actually been the most bedroom communities to Manhattan over time, and it's their growth as economies in its own right, adding employment at scale and even exceeding other whole areas of the region that has really buoyed the New York City gains in this period as well. And again, as I said, it's not just the quantity, it's the quality of the jobs that we see here. Other parts of the region have had diverse local economies dependent on multiple sectors, but what we're seeing in the post-recession period is that the composition of those economies has really changed. Office-based jobs have exclusively gained in New York City. Our gains have offset losses in other parts of the region, and we're seeing that the gains that other parts of the region are experiencing are really in more locally-serving education, healthcare, and retail sectors, where New York City also gained substantially, but not exclusively. We're also seeing that industrial losses, while essentially at net zero or slight gains in New York City at this point in time, perhaps because we've lost significantly in previous cycles, we're still seeing that decline in industrial base in other parts of the region. And just to break that down in a little bit more detail, in the office sectors, what you can see is that New York City really rebounded significantly in the post-recession period. All parts of the region lost financial services. New York City gained back a diversity of different parts of the office sectors, information in particular exclusively growing in New York City, as well as Fairfield County, but that was not enough to offset losses in Connecticut or other parts of the region. Real estate really dominated by New York City. Professional business services, management, administration, much stronger in New York City coming out of the recession, and that diversification allowed us to continue to grow our office spaces relative to other parts of the region. Institution, primarily driven by the growth in ambulatory healthcare, which is happening across the region, but strongest in New York City. Education gains, strongest in New York City as well. And again, in industrial, we saw significant declines continuing in the manufacturing areas, but other parts, construction, transportation, and warehousing, offsetting some of those losses, particularly in New York City. New Jersey seeing significant transportation and logistics gains, but not on a one-for-one basis with the goods manufacturing that's in decline. And just to show you that there's a lot of nuance within the region, these are not functioning as homogeneous blocks. For instance, Hudson County, just across the river from us, is doing well in terms of office jobs, but that itself was not enough to offset larger losses in the suburban areas of northern New Jersey. Similarly, you see that industrial is also doing well in Suffolk County, but not in Nassau, and so some of those are offsetting as well. And overall, what this is painting is a picture where, in terms of overall economic output, and here we're looking at total wages as a proxy for GDP, what you see is that New York City has consistently gained value over time. Our wages are growing actually more than our employment loss. Our gains are higher than our employment gains in wages. So as we've taken off like a rocket ship, what you've really seen is that other parts of the region have not kept pace with that total gain, particularly North Jersey, as such a large part of the economy, has really stayed basically at a static level since 2000. Other parts of the region have lost a little bit, but are much smaller segments of the total economy. So switching to the labor force side, what you really see is that the economic effects are really linked to where labor force is gaining. Labor force has gained across the region at rates that are consistent with the national average, but this is due to two different factors. There's people staying in the labor force longer in post-65, as well as new entrants into the labor force. And what you can see is that geographically, different parts of the region are performing differently, have later entrance in the labor force as larger parts of their labor force gains. New York City has only about 10% of its gains that are plus 65-plus. Places like Long Island have 30%. So to isolate the effects of that, we look just at the cohort of 25 to 54 younger workers to really understand the effects of how that new entrant is affecting our economy. And what you see here is that it's very specific geographies in our region that are getting increases in young workers. New York City's gain in young workers alone offset declines in the rest of the region. The other locations that are adding those workers, the Jersey coast, Newark, Stamford, Bridgeport, New Haven, certain towns in Long Island, but a scant few, certain towns, the cities of Westchester, it's very specific geographies, the places that are mostly close to us, places that have transit, places that have rental housing, places that we think of as sort of the transit-oriented centers of the region primarily. And those geographies where we're seeing those workforce growth occur are very consistent with where we're seeing new housing created. The region saw about 400,000 units created over the post-recession period. New York City added about 42% of all of those units, 60% of multifamily units, and North Jersey actually added almost as much housing as New York City did in this period, whereas you can see Long Island is really very marginal in terms of its overall production, as well as the Hudson Valley in Connecticut, much more anemic relative to North Jersey and New York City, most of the housing being produced in this area, which is consistent, again, with where we're seeing those workers added. So putting these patterns together of housing, workforce, and employment, what you can see is that there's clear imbalances. As we in the city intensify our job base above and beyond the growth of our housing supply, we've added 178,000 more jobs than housing permits since 2000, which means that we will continue to be dependent on a supply of housing that exceeds our borders, as we have historically been, but we're also seeing other parts of the region tip balance, become more housing-intensive over time, particularly North Jersey, as they've added a lot of housing and a lot of population relative to their declining job base or their stagnant job base. And that there's real matches between this, as other parts of the region create housing and population that's supplying the employment centers of New York City, significant implications for us in terms of our transportation infrastructure and access to opportunity as we see these population and employment changes play out over the long term. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and also want to point out one additional resource that we've also released. The NYC Metro Region Explorer up on City Planning's webpage takes all of this data and makes it both interactive and also transparent and downloadable. This is something that we have heard a lot of requests from other governments, really to try and understand regional data more effectively, and so we've put what we have up there and are continuing to improve this over time as a resource so that others can understand what we think we see about the regional trends as well.
Any questions from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Efron?
First of all, thank you. There's so much to digest here. This is a real take-home, and you were operating on warp speed, which we all appreciate. I just wonder, are there corresponding maps, I mean, transit in particular? It'd be really interesting to see the second-to-last slide and the last slide sort of mapped. From our land-use perspective, are most of the available housing units on Metro North or on Long Island Railroad, in other words, is there an older housing stock that was built along railroad train station routes in Connecticut, New Jersey, and Long Island that we should be thinking about land-use changes for in creating new downtowns 20 years from now that are closer out to East New York and Penn Station and, well, I guess we're doing it in Grand Central already. Are we seizing the opportunities where there is available housing that has transit that's not auto?
I think it's a great question, and I think the first premise is, who's the "we", right? And I think from our perspective, we have taken a very deferential stance towards our neighbors to say, we know New York City needs housing. We know that our job base has continued to grow, and we've always had this intersecting relationship with the region's housing supply, but where that supply has come from has changed over time. So what we are seeing, and I think what the data really shows, is that Long Island, which a generation ago really had been the premier location for migration out of New York City to a suburban base, and Westchester are not playing that same role today. And where we are seeing the production happen is in places like North Jersey and in some of the towns of Long Island and some of the Westchester towns, but it's very specific. So the question of, are there other places that could be providing that role in Long Island and Westchester, just to pick on them for sure? I think the answer is for sure. There's a lot of research on this. I know the Regional Plan Association released a report a few months ago looking at all of the parking lots that exist near train stations. There are many. There are infrastructure reasons, like here. Every one of those decisions is highly local and highly specific. So I think for us, the question is really, if we can't make local decisions for other governments about where and exactly how to produce that housing, but we know we need resources from somewhere, how do we engage in a way that sort of creates that synergy and identifies those opportunities and make sure that transportation investments are being made in a way that truly understands where that housing is likely to be? And that's, I guess, the part where we've really started to say, the first thing we can do is understand the problem more clearly. And just the act of mapping out where housing is being created in the region is something that we have not really done before?
It's a fascinating answer, but I'm actually asking the flipside question, which is, where are the employment centers of the future going to be?
Interesting.
And that is something that we, 20 years out, should be thinking about, and whether or not, if the housing exists there and is coming down in price on the train stations, train routes in these places you've just described, and I think it's great that they could possibly create more housing there, but should we be thinking differently about where our next downtowns are going to be? You know, if you look back 20 years, we probably didn't pick right, or didn't stick to it, or there was probably a combination of things about creating new downtowns in Brooklyn, far out in Brooklyn, in Long Island City. Those became more residential in a lot of ways than business. And we did choose Hudson Yards, which obviously is going to have a big impact on employment and should suck up some of the great New Jersey housing that might be available. But are there trends that we should be looking at outside of our borders to determine where within our borders we should be creating more availability for the future of offices or whatever employment is going to be in 20, 30 years? And that's really the map I was trying to figure out, and I don't know if it exists, but it seems to me that that's a really good planning tool for this department and for us.
Yeah. I would say trying to figure out where future employment is going to go is something that we are very concerned about, and I think what this tells you is that we have done a good job over the last 20 years because the growth in the because the growth in the borough locations is panning out. And so certainly thinking about the employment growth to places like Jamaica, to places like the South Bronx, is something that we should absolutely be thinking about. There may be additional ones beyond that, but I think even that, really thinking about how do we make transportation investments that support not just Manhattan-based, but the secondary centers within the city, as they grow in increasing regional importance, is very important.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, thank you. I agree, this is phenomenal information. I think it also points to a few challenges that we have. You know, we are obviously the sort of behemoth, you know, in terms of our governmental structures, you know, the resources that we have, but we can't do this alone. And, you know, a few things come up, some of the lack of control we have over the regional transportation systems, resistance among some of these communities that are located along train stops. I mean, I was recently in Long Island and attended a community meeting for a TOD location, and folks agreed they didn't want to see any building over three stories at the train station, at the location of the train station. And they wanted to maintain, you know, certain sort of aesthetic standards they had become used to. In some of those locations, the sewage systems don't support higher density, even if they were okay with it.
Right.
You know, so I know that there have been efforts to convene regional mayors, and I know the RPA, Regional Plan Association, really tries to support this, but I'm wondering if, you know, you could speak to sort of what are we doing as a city to sort of have everybody play in the sandbox particularly well, if it's even possible? And, you know, what is that we can do as a commission? Is there anything under our purview?
Sure. So, you know, I guess I would step back again and say, you know, when we started this regional planning office a few years ago, the mayor's vision was really, how does New York City lead on issues where we don't necessarily control the outcomes? And I think we've really been trying a few tacks, right, which are not, you know, again, very respectful of the fact that we are the largest municipality in this region, but we don't speak for the local decisions. And I think also, you know, with this commission and everything we do here, we have an amount of respect for the decisions being made on a local basis, some, but also the need to think about these things collectively as a region. So we have been doing some of our own convenings. The RPA has actually been a partner in some of that. We've been working for about two years now with the planning directors of other large cities, Jersey City, Hoboken, the Westchester towns. I've also been out and talking to a lot of the municipalities, you know, as well, sharing our perspective, talking about the need for regional housing, just sharing that information, but obviously without any pressure. The meeting that we had a week ago, where we released this report, and the deputy mayor and Commissioner Lago were there as well, also, I think, was, you know, really trying to say to our neighbors, it's hard to build housing, but we all have to figure out how to deal with these challenges together. And so, you know, without, I don't think we have an answer for how do we all get there yet, but I think what we're doing is looking around the country, seeing places that are trying to be successful in conquering these challenges together, and trying to put New York City in a position to look at the region, tell people that we care about them, and be the convener and thought leader on how we can look at these in a collective way that's respectful and collaborative.
And this is precisely the right first step, shared information. So I...
And actually talking to them. I'd like to repeat the story that when I first met the planning director of Jersey City, she'd worked for Jersey City for 30 years, and she'd never once met with New York City. So sometimes our status as a behemoth keeps us from just even interacting in a common-sense way, and that is absolutely where you have to start. It is not a silver bullet, and as you all know...
At that meeting, someone asked the question about a governance structure, and we noted that if we had started by tackling governance, we never would have gotten to this point. I've been surprised how this go-gently lead with providing information has been so well-received. The messages in this report are harsh for certain portions of our region, and yet the planning directors were embracing it. The other untold story here is that the richness of the detailed information that we have about New York City is not matched elsewhere. And we have received requests from directors outside for suggestions about how we might be able to normalize across the region, sort of lifting the level of information that we have. I don't know that this is the end state, but the fact that so far we've been pushing on an open door and have received such positive receptivity, even as people are receiving tough news, encourages us, encourages us to continue along this path. Well, then, thank you to Carolyn and to Dara.
Thank you.
This is the New York City Planning Commission Public Review Session for Monday, August 6, 2018. The time is 1:41. The first item on the agenda is a certification of a UDOT disposition in Bronx Community District 6. Takiya Jordan is here to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Chair Lago. I'm here today to discuss an application submitted to advanced land use actions at 4697 Third Avenue. And I'll wait for the presentation to come up. The applicant, the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development, or HPD, seeks UDOT designation and approval of disposition of a publicly-owned site at 4691 4697 Third Avenue. That is Block 3041, Lots 38 and 40, in the Fordham Belmont neighborhood of the Bronx. The actions pursued would facilitate the construction of a new eight-story mixed-use development comprising approximately 52 new affordable housing units and some ground floor commercial. HPD will be disposing of the site to Bronx Pro Group, a well-known Bronx-based community development firm that has worked to maintain and create over 2,000 units of affordable housing throughout the Bronx since 1998. The project area is located in the northern section of Community District 6, in the center of the Bronx, as shown here on the map. The project area or development site is on this map indicated in red, which I don't know how visible it is. It's toward the bottom of the map. It is comprised of approximately 9,500 square feet of total lot area. The project area is owned by the City of New York and is located on the western side of Third Avenue between Cyrus Place and East 188th Street. The surrounding neighborhood contains a mix of residential, commercial, and community facility uses, with pockets of light industrial and parking. Third Avenue is a major north-south transportation corridor and is lined with a mix of commercial and community facilities and some industrial auto-related uses. Two blocks north of the project area is Fordham Plaza, a commercial and transportation hub served by about 15 bus lines, including lines that serve Westchester County, as well as the Metro North Harlem, Hudson, and New Canaan lines. Subway service in the area includes the B&amp;D Lines, which run along the Grand Concourse, about a half-mile west of the site. There are a number of public facilities in the surrounding area, including a post office, several schools that include Fordham University, Bronx Middle School 254, and Theodore Roosevelt High School. Several city and state agencies have offices in two office buildings at Fordham Plaza. Open spaces in the neighborhood include Flood Triangle, Webster Playground, and Washington The development site is currently vacant, but was most recently used as a parking lot by NYPD. Prior to being a parking lot, the site contained two four-story mixed-use commercial and residential buildings, which were demolished between 1979 and 1980. The area around the site contains a range of building forms. Residential uses in the study area typically consist of four- to six-story buildings, some with ground-floor commercial space, primarily along Park and Washington Avenues. There are also attached and semi-detached single and two-family homes in the study area, in the project area, alongside Cyrus Place and East 187th Street. A larger 15-story residential building is located at the southeast corner of East 188th and Washington Avenue. Commercial and industrial uses along Third Avenue are predominantly one to three stories. The zoning on the development site is C45X. Zoning in the surrounding area is varied and includes some R71, R6, R5, C44, and M14. In 2010, the project site was a part of a rezoning that rezoned the area, some of the area from C3 district to the current C45X. This was part of the Third Avenue Tremont Avenue rezoning. The rezoning was pursued in an effort to promote new opportunities for residential and commercial development in the neighborhood. An inclusionary housing designated area was also mapped as a result of that rezoning. We have pictures of the project site in the upper left. The site is obscured by some trees, but does depict some adjacent uses, like the auto-related uses across Cyrus Place from the site. On the upper right is a photo taken from across Third Avenue, and you can see here how wide Third Avenue is. And likewise, on the bottom left is an image of the site from across Third Avenue. On the upper left on this slide is a picture taken of the site from East 188th Street, facing east. You can see in this picture the 15-story residential building previously described. On the upper right is a photo taken from Cyrus Place, facing the site, which is on the left in Finston. And finally, on the lower left is a photo taken from Third Avenue, facing north toward Fordham Plaza, giving you a sense of the area context. The building in the background is Fordham Place, one of the two 14-story commercial developments that include office in the area. These ring the plaza, and in the foreground, closer to the site, you see an existing residential building and gas station. The proposed development is a mixed-use development that will bring, as I said, 52 new units of affordable housing to the Fordham Belmont neighborhood, as well as approximately 7,000 square feet of retail space. There is no parking being proposed in this development. Units in the building will have apartments available to families with incomes between 30 and 80% of AMI. Currently, the median household income in the surrounding neighborhoods is around the $25,000 per year mark. Because the site has been a blight in the neighborhood for many years, and the project activities would promote sound growth and development, HPD is seeking an urban development action area project designation along with the disposition. That's what I have. If there are any questions?
Thank you. Could you go back to the local context slide that you had?
This one, or?
The one before.
There you go.
We were just all struck so frequently, the remaining city-owned land that HPD has is particularly challenging land. This is an absolutely prime site, and we wondered why it had remained in the portfolio. The answer is that it was used for NYPD parking. But now that the parking has moved, this just is the type of development site that we wish we had more of. Commissioner Afra.
I'm sure the community will opine on the height, but it's exciting when to see 100% affordable housing coming back on city-owned property, yay. And I hesitate to say this, but I do hope that when it does come back to us, there will have been some confirmation that the community has seen the renderings we've seen. I see the orange on the building, and I get nervous because it's the color of construction. And for a site that's been blight for so long, I would hope that there would be some consideration about whether it would look like it was still under construction from far enough distant views, as opposed to something that's positive. So the community will make that decision with the developer, I hope, or the developer will make the decision with consultation with the community, but I would hope to hear that there was, in fact, consultation on that.
Okay. Yes, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Ms. Jordan, I heard you say that the median area income was around $25,000 per annum.
Yes.
What is affordability defined in the context of this development, the 52 affordable units? What range of incomes? I know it's 100% affordable...
In dollar amounts?
Yeah.
I can ask HPD for that right now. What they're describing as is incomes between 30 and 80% of AMI for a family of three. That's currently how they're defining it. As far as exact dollar amounts, I can ask them to provide additional information.
Thank you.
Commissioner Deloze.
Thanks for the presentation. And this comes back to, if we could find out which exact HPD program is likely to be financed under, and then the unit mix. But 25% of AMI is lower than 40% of AMI, so very few families in the local community may be eligible for the affordable housing.
Right.
Other questions? Okay, the application is certified.
Thank you.
The second item on the agenda, page number 14, is a certification of acquisition for continued use of a DOT vehicle maintenance and repair facility in Staten Island Community District 1. Dani Viera of the Staten Island Office is here to present.
Okay, I am presenting an application submitted by the New York City Department of Transportation and Department of Citywide Administrative Services, seeking the acquisition of a lease renewal of an existing building located at 1893 Richmond Terrace to facilitate the continued use of an approximately 61,140 square feet for a vehicle and equipment maintenance and repair The project area is located in the Port Richmond neighborhood of Staten Island's Community District 1, and consists of one tax lot located at the intersection of Richmond Terrace and Jewett Avenue. The project area has 323 feet of frontage on Richmond Terrace and is developed with a one-story 38,000-square-foot building. The project area also has frontage on Bodine Creek to the east. This is a waterway that connects to the Kilvan Coal Water Body. Public transit access to the project area includes the S40 bus line that runs along Richmond This is a view of the project area from the intersection of Richmond Terrace and Jewett Avenue. Most of the site is surrounded by this tall fencing with public art installation along The existing neighborhood context consists of industrial and auto-service uses north of Richmond Terrace, which includes the New York City Department of Environmental Protections' Port Richmond Wastewater Treatment Plant, located just east of the site. South of the project area, there are commercial and mixed uses fronting Richmond Terrace to the south, an auto-service corridor along Rector Street, and upland residential uses. The project area is mapped in a M11 zoning district, which generally consists of light industrial uses. Just north of the project area is a M31 zoning district, which are designated for areas with heavy industries. South of Richmond Terrace, there are R4 and R32 zoning districts, which permit all housing types at a FAR range from .5 to .75. These residential districts are mapped within C21 and C22 commercial overlays. These overlays permit commercial developments or mixed-use developments with ground-floor retail uses that serve general local retail needs. Mapped within R32 and R4 districts, these commercial overlays permit an FAR of 1.0. The upland residential neighborhoods are mapped within R3A zoning districts, which permit low-density residential homes that range from one to three stories and up to an FAR of .5. A C8 district is mapped between Jewett Avenue and Clove Road. This district permits automotive and other heavy commercial services at a FAR of 1.0. Operations on the site requires 20 employees responsible for the maintenance and repair Department of Transportation's borough-wide fleet of vehicles and equipment. The Department of Transportation's fleet consists of 140 assets, including a mix of small machines, trucks, and sedans. Only estimated 20 vehicles would be serviced at a given time. Vehicles will only be serviced... Vehicles will only be serviced inside the garage. There are offices on site that would be used by employees to conduct administrative duties that would support the operations. Hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 5:30 a.m. to 11 p.m. Vehicle activity to and from the site will be sporadic and spread over the course of the workday. Vehicles in need of servicing will be both driven and towed to the site and have access to the site via two curb cuts on Richmond Terrace. There are 38 parking spaces at the site. 17 parking spaces are located within the building. 21 parking spaces are located outside. Employees will park on the site. So the requested land use action would facilitate the continued use of the entirety of the site, 61,140 square feet for vehicle and equipment maintenance and repair facility operated by the Department of Transportation. It is anticipated that the new lease would be 10 years with an option to extend for another 10 years. Any questions?
Questions? Yes, Commissioner Cirillo.
Danny, thank you. Just a couple of things. So this was 28 years ago, 10-year lease with a 10-year renewal, I mean, option to renew, which I'm assuming was exercised. But it's been eight years since the original terms of the lease expired. Do we have any idea what has caused a delay in seeking either this action or anything else that might have been in the future of this use?
Yeah, I'm not too sure about the delay. We could possibly follow up on that. What they have been doing since expiration of the original lease has been operating on the site from a month-to-month license agreement, but we could...
Understood. Is it the same owner from the original, from 28 years ago? Do we know?
I believe so, but we can confirm that.
Okay. And I guess the only other, I mean, obviously, this has been the use, and there, as far as I know, and that there's no issues with the operation and all of that. But I do have a question, just, I guess, for no other reason, for the record to reflect that. What we're considering today is a clean potential approval for renewal of exactly the same location and space, because the report identifies errors in the previous approval that the commission made back 28 years ago, but that the text may have been, was accurate, and what this application is, is accurate based on the text, not necessarily the inaccurate report of the commission 28 years ago. Is that correct?
Yeah, there was a discrepancy between the land use application and the CPC report that was delivered as a result of the approval, and also between the lease. We've been working with the Department of Transportation and DCAST to clarify that over the course of the...
I just want to make sure that what we will be, what we're considering is actually not different than what was actually approved the last time, and we're not adding anything to it or potentially removing anything from it. So we're sort of mirroring the approval even though the report may not be accurate in how it's written.
Right. And we could follow up and confirm that. And we've been working with DCAST and DOT to confirm the actual numbers, and we'll consult with them what the original lease was for.
Thank you, Danny. Thank you.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes, thank you, Dan. I'm coming at this, I guess, from a little bit of a different perspective from Fred. I go past this place many times a week. What we are proving, I hope, is an exact, a continuation of exactly of how it's being utilized now and has been for the past 20 years that I can remember, irrespective of what the original application is. So if there is a, if there was something in the original application that's no longer, in fact, what I'm concerned about is that the change from the way it's actually been operating doesn't change as we go forward, if I'm making myself clear.
And we'll confirm all of that, and what they're currently proposing in this application is the use of the entirety of the site. So going forward, hopefully, that will be clear.
It sounds like the way we reconcile the two is actually pretty straightforward. One, making sure what are the boundaries of what is being used now and seeing how that overlays with the actual language from the last time around as corrected.
And the actual usage of the property, that, you know, that they don't somehow change this into some other kind of facility there.
I'm sure we'll confirm that.
Other comments?
Just on that, the site selection is specific to the use, so you're approving the use here.
Okay, and with that, the application is certified.
Thank you.
Item number three, page number 33, is a certification of a special permit in Manhattan Community District One. Allison Brown is here to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here to present 51 White Street. 51 White Street LLC seeks approval for a special permit in order to facilitate a two-story enlargement on an existing five-story building at 51 White Street. So the site, located in here in red, is a half-block east of Broadway and three blocks south of Canal Street, within the Tribeca neighborhood of Lower Manhattan. The site is located in a C-6 2-way district. The surrounding area is characterized by mixed-use buildings, with the majority of building heights ranging from five to seven stories. Most surrounding buildings were constructed as commercial loft buildings and have been converted to residential use with commercial use on the ground floor. The surrounding area is well-served by public transportation, including several subway lines shown here on the map, as well as a few bus lines, the M-5 and the M-20. The development site itself is a rectangular, 100-foot-deep, 39-foot-wide lot, interior lot, located on the south side of White Street between Church Street and Franklin Place. White Street is a narrow one-way street. The site became vacant in 2016, but was previously occupied by commercial office space on the ground floor, accessory storage on the building's cellar and subcellar floors, and 12 units of residential apartments on the existing building's second through fifth Constructed in 1858, historically, the building was used by importers and wholesalers of fabrics and hardware. The site is located in the Tribeca East Historic District. The LPC designation report describes the site as contributing building in the overall historic character of the East Tribeca neighborhood. The Civic Center synagogue, which borders the project to the west, is a two-story community facility. It's not contributing building in the landmark district. The individual landmarked 55 White Street, which borders the project's site to the east, is a seven-story mixed-use building with ground-floor retail and residential space above. These photos, taken in 1992, the year the LPC designated the Historic District, show the storefront of 51 White Street and the fire scrape, which were both added and modified in the 20th century, are not original to the building. The applicant proposes a two-story vertical enlargement, illustrated here in Axon View. The applicant is proposing a series of setbacks of bulk from the street line, ranging at only 10 feet on the sixth floor to, in full extent, of 38 feet on the seventh floor. The resulting bulk is pushed back away from the street line and away from the western side of the lot. In addition to the two additional floors, there is a mezzanine floor, referred to as Floor 1A in the briefing package, between the first and second floor on the rear half of the building, so that'll be located right here. In addition to the proposed bulk rendered here in elevation view, the applicant will also be undertaking several renovations to the building, including restoration of all storefront bays to the original 19th-century appearance by exposing and restoring the original cast iron columns that are currently covered in 20th-century cement block, and installing new wood and glass storefronts. Additionally, the nonoriginal firescape will be removed, and the entire marble facade is being cleaned and repaired. And all 62 windows on both the front and rear facade will be replaced with wood windows, which would match the original 19th-century profile. In order to achieve the proposed bulk enlargement, the applicant is requesting waivers for height, setback distance, inner court, and rear yard window requirements. So illustrated here is the height waiver, a height waiver of the maximum, or sorry, the waiver of the maximum permitted height for narrow buildings. The building is built to a height of 76 feet and 2 inches, and the as-of-right height for a new building on this lot would be 67 feet in today's regulations. Therefore, a waiver is needed to allow the building to enlarge at all. The applicant is proposing an overall height to reach 100 feet, 8 inches, including bulkheads and mechanical equipment. The top of the seventh floor is proposed at 93 feet. In comparison, the enlargement on the neighboring 55 White Street, shown here, the top of that seventh floor reaches a height of 99 feet, and the overall height excluding, including bulkheads and mechanical equipment, is taller than the proposed enlargement on 51 White A waiver of the maximum height and setback regulations is also needed. A 15-foot setback above a height of 85 feet is required. A waiver is needed to allow for the proposed 12-foot setback along 18 feet of the frontage. So we see here in plan view, again, the setbacks step back to various distances, so only along 18 feet of the frontage is the waiver required or needed. A waiver of maximum, a minimum dimension of inner courtyard is needed, a minimum inner court of 1,200 square feet of area, resulting in a depth of 30 feet and 9 inches, is needed for this lot. Shown here in red and green combined is the full extent of the 1,200 square feet of area. A waiver is needed to allow an area of only 214 square feet at the proposed mezzanine level here, and an area of 780 square feet at the proposed sixth and seventh floors Finally, a waiver of minimum required distance between legally required windows is being requested. A minimum distance of 30 feet between lot line and legal windows is needed. The applicant requests a waiver to allow a window-to-lot line distance of 5 feet 6 inches on the mezzanine level and 20 feet at the proposed sixth and seventh floor. This waiver, shown again in section view for clarity, only the mezzanine level and the sixth and seventh floors require the waiver, as they're the only newly proposed So to conclude, I would like to direct the commission to the conditions and findings of the special permit. For zoning lots with existing buildings located within historic districts designated by the LPC, the City Planning Commission may permit modification of bulk regulations provided that a continuing maintenance plan is put in place and a certificate appropriateness is granted by LPC. LPC granted a certificate appropriateness in December 2017. The applicant is pursuing a restricted declaration in order to meet the conditions of the continued maintenance plan. In order to grant a special permit, the commission may find, shall find, that the modification shall have minimal adverse effects on the structures or open space in the vicinity in terms of scale, location, and access to latent air. In the commission's briefing packages, you will find the full zoning resolution text of 74711, as well as statement of findings provided by the applicant for the commission's review. Thank you.
Questions? Yes, Commissioner Levin.
Actually, I have several. What happened to the previous occupants of the building? It indicated that there had been some commercial space and 12 units of residential apartments, and that the building was vacated in April of 2016.
The applicant is currently pursuing interior renovations as of right to the building, separate from this application, so the building was vacated in order for them to do interior renovations.
And to know how, were any, I guess, I guess the fair question for us to ask is about whether any of those units are rent-regulated or protected in any way?
I can confirm with the applicant, the rent regulations, if any rent regulations apply to the building.
Okay, good. What's the purpose of the mezzanine? The plans show it as a new apartment, but it looks unusual in the building plans. What's their idea?
The applicant is proposing that it is his own unit, residential unit. Like I said, it's only in the back half of the building.
And it's...
Yeah, the Florida...
It's very short?
The ceiling-to-floor height is shorter than the other proposed floors or existing floors. I can get that...
Well, they'll come back for a public hearing. Maybe they can give us a little bit more narrative about that particular space. And then, it's convenient that you have this picture up, because that naked wall next to the synagogue is really just bare concrete. And it would certainly be nice recognizing that that's going to be exposed forever and that they are currently doing work on all sides of the building anyway, to provide some modest treatment for that that doesn't leave it looking like an unfinished wall. I don't know if that's something that anybody has thought about as this proposal has been being developed, but...
No, it's an excellent point. Again, I can ask the applicant to speak to that when they come back.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Efron.
Thanks. I have one more to add for when it comes back. The building next door that you referred to as having a higher height, both on floor height and then on mechanical equipment. When did that happen? Was it through BSA? Was it through 74711?
I'm not sure the exact history of the enlargement, but I can find that out and come back to the commission with the answer.
Other questions? Okay, the application is certified.
Thank you.
Item number four, page 56, is a non-Euler referral of an authorization in Brooklyn Community District One. Sayad Ahmed is here to present.
The applicant 420 Kent Avenue LLC is requesting an authorization for phase development... This thing is... Okay. The applicant 420 Kent Avenue LLC is requesting an authorization for phase development of upland connection pursuant to zoning resolution section 62822C. The authorization would allow the issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy for the soon-to-be-completed North Tower with 65 affordable units and the opening of the completed shore public walkway. The site is located here, shown in red, in the Williamsburg section of Community District One. The Williamsburg Bridge is located two blocks to the north of the site, and the Brooklyn Navy Yard is approximately six blocks to the south of the site. The upland areas to the east of the project site are developed with residential uses and are in R-6, R-7A, R-7X, and R-71 districts. The project site at 420 Kent Avenue is being developed with a mixed-use development of 857 dwelling units, of which 186 will be affordable under the Inclusionary Housing Program. The development also provides 27,300 square feet of waterfront public access areas, which are shown here in red, outlined in red, which is approximately 3,000 square feet more than the amount required by the zoning. The WPAA includes a 40-foot-wide shore public walkway and a 60-foot-wide visual corridor co-terminus with an upland connection, which is located in the middle of the site. Applicant adjacent properties to the north, towards the bridge, include Giando's, an existing three-story restaurant and banquet hall, which is right here, where it says And to the south is 14- to 24-story Schaefer Landing, a 350-unit residential complex with a waterfront asplanade and upland connection, which is right this one. This is Schaefer's Landing. The Schaefer Landing asplanade also... The Schaefer Landing esplanade also serves as a stop for East River Ferry. The applicant is, the applicant is in the middle of construction. At present, the 40-foot-wide shore public walkway and the North Tower, which is right this one, are almost complete, while the upland connection and the South Tower are under construction and won't be finished until April of next year. After the approval of this application, applicant would like to apply for a TCO for the completed North Tower and open the completed shore public walkway to public. But they cannot get a TCO for the North Tower while the upland connection is under construction and is used as a staging area to facilitate the construction of South Tower. To get a TCO for the North Tower, the applicant has filed this application seeking an authorization for a phase development of the upland connection and the site. In order to grant an authorization, the commission must find that the amount of WPAA developed in any phase is proportionate to the lot area being developed in such phase. There are two phases, Phase 1 and Phase 2. All of the construction will take place in Phases 1A and B, and Phase 2 would be the final condition when the entire WPAA and the lot area will be completed and open to public. As stated in the applicant's statement of findings, in Phase 1 and B, approximately 35% of the lot area will be developed, while almost 65% of the WPAA will be completed. In Phase 2, 100% of the WPAA, which includes shore public walkway and the entire upland connection, will be completed. I will briefly describe the phasing plan 1A and 1B during which the applicant will shift access to shore public walkway in upland connection to accomplish the dual objectives of completing the South Tower and the upland connection. In Phase 1A, it will bring, it will begin in September after the approval of this application when the North Tower and the shore public walkway will be completed. During this phase, the access to shore public walkway would be provided through a temporary 15- to 25-foot wide path, highlighted here in yellow, right this one, located in front of the North Tower, which will also serve as the entry to the residential building. During this faith, this phase, the remaining portion of the upland connection would be under construction, where a 6-inch water main, which is shown here right next to the yellow pathway, this, they will be installing a water main, a fire hydrant here, and a electric box here. And the rest of the esplanade, like this site, will serve as a staging area, loading dock, and a hoist will be here to facilitate the construction of the South Tower. The temporary path, which is 15- to 20-foot wide, would have seating, benches, tables, chairs, and planters, and trash cans, and would provide adequate lighting. The pathway would be wide enough to allow ample room for the movement of pedestrians and access for emergency vehicles to the shore public walkway. The pathway would have an eight-foot-high fence separating it from the construction activity to the south. The fence would be decorated with vinyl screen printed with renderings or artwork. This phase will last for three months until the end of the year. Phase 1B, starting in January of 2019, the access to waterfront esplanade will shift to the finished center of the upland connection, highlighted here in yellow. During this phase, the remaining portion of the upland connection would be finished. This phase will last four months until April of 2019. This path in the middle of the upland connection will be 20 feet wide and will provide access to North and South Towers. The temporary path would have seating, benches, tables, chairs, planters, and trash cans, and adequate lighting. Phase 2 is the final phase, when 100% of the WPAA is shown here in green, which includes the entire upland connection and the shore public walkway will be completed according to the plans approved by the chair in a waterfront certification dated 4/10/2015, and the entire WPAA will be open to public. At that time, the entire lot area will be developed with a mixed-use development consisting of two residential towers. In conclusion, the, an authorization for phase development would allow the issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy for the North Tower, which has 65 affordable units, and North Tower is shown here. And the authorization will also allow public access to the completed shore public walkway from South 8th Street and have it connected to Schaefer Landing shore public walkway to the south. Any questions, commissioners? Yes?
Yes, Commissioner Efron.
What is the current state of the public access north and south of the proposed temporary, the proposed walkway?
To the south, I will show you. To the south, Schaefer Landing Public Esplanade has, is open and has been open for more than a decade.
And it connects uniformly?
Yes, they are, they're making the connection, and it will be connected to Schaefer Landing Esplanade. And there will be an additional access point through the upland connection where there will be temporary pathways in Phase 1A and Phase 1B, which will shift, you know, in the upland connection while they're finishing it, you know, outside of the pathways.
I'll also note that there's an East River Ferry stop at Schaefer Landing.
Right, so, so I guess my point is, it will be the full run?
Yes.
Even as the perpendicular upland connection is...
Is under construction.
Great, that's what I want.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
But just to continue with that, what prospects are there for a future connection to the Giando's property, which I think would, would be the...
Giando's is right now in Manufacturing District, and we believe that someone or, they will come, whoever the... They will come for a rezoning, and at that point, we would like, you know...
We'll remember that they need to...
Yes, we will ask them to, you know. The site, Giando's site is very small, very, like, difficult to develop because Broadway visual corridor runs through it. And they won't be able to develop that site for residential uses as-of-right. They will need special permits for height and, you know, bulk waivers.
So we'll have an opportunity to talk to them?
So the commission will have an opportunity to, you know...
Okay, and then Sayad, since you know everything about this part of the world, what has become of the thing that I guess was called Rose Plaza on the river that's on the other side of Schaefer Landing? That would, if developed, be a further continuation of the esplanade?
Exactly, exactly.
So, but that's not moved since we...
No, they haven't moved. I think the family who owned that property, they resolved their internal issues, whatever they were, and they are seeking a buyer right now. The special permits will expire next year. And I think either they will develop it as-of-right or they will come back for, you know, new permits. We don't know who the new owners will be and what they will do. But they will for sure come back for a new cert, waterfront cert.
Okay, good, because the waterfront features are in the zoning. They're obliged to fill those in.
If they are not developing the site as it was approved with the special permits, they have to come back for a new waterfront cert. And the commission and the chair will have an opportunity to see what they are proposing. And it complies with zoning, new waterfront zoning.
Good.
And actually, continuing the tour of the waterfront further north on the other side of the bridge, I would urge anyone who hasn't yet seen Domino Park to bicycle out there. It is truly a remarkable space. That's been adopted by the community almost overnight.
Yes.
Commissioner Deloos.
That doesn't surprise me. I'm just wondering how this plan, what, what community involvement has been thus far in developing this phased plan?
The applicant, I mean, this application will go to the community board for 45 days. They have not been part of the plan as developed by the applicant, but now they will have an opportunity to review it, and the applicant will make a presentation to them.
I'd also note that the length of time for which these temporary upland connections are in place is probably around the length of time of the public review process. It truly is a temporary staging. Other questions? Okay, this will get referred out to the community board for 45 days.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing our tour of the Brooklyn waterfront. Item number five, page 73, is a post-referral of a non-Ulrich authorization in Brooklyn Community District One. Daphne Lundee is here to present.
Good afternoon. This is a private application by Greenpoint Landing LLC to facilitate an approximately 400,000-square-foot as-of-right mixed-use development on the upland portion of 5C. The applicant is requesting two zoning authorizations to facilitate a 21,000-square-foot waterfront public access area. Separately, the applicant is requesting two waterfront chairperson certifications. The project area is located in the Greenpoint neighborhood of Community District One in Brooklyn. The development site is bounded by DuPont Street to the north, West Street to the east, Eagle Street to the south, and the East River to the west. The site is zoned with a mix of R6 and R8 with a C24 overlay along West Street. The site is part of the larger Greenpoint Landing project, which was approved by the CPC in 2013. Parcel 5C is the proposed project area. The proposed actions include a zoning subdivision of 5C into 5C1 and 5C2. Partial 5C is a subject of the proposed waterfront authorizations and certifications. As part of the Greenpoint Landing Plan, parcel 5C1 was envisioned as an amphitheater area with tiered seating to provide wider views to the waterfront. A previous version of the filed application included waivers to the overall planting and lawn area to accommodate the tiered experience. And the waiver areas are shown in pink. At a CB1 public hearing held on May 23, 2018, members of the board expressed concerns regarding the reduction in planting and lawn area. The board voted unanimously to disapprove all authorizations having to do with the reduction in planting and lawn. In response to these concerns, a working group was organized with a variety of stakeholders in the neighborhood to discuss potential modifications to the project. Several working group meetings were organized in conjunction with Parks, City Planning, the applicant, and Councilmember Levin. As a result of these changes, the applicant modified the design of the WPAA to meet planting and lawn requirements. On July 27, 2018, the applicant filed revisions to the land use application to reflect these changes. The waivers related to the circulation path, visual corridor, height of the retaining walls, and the opening of the trash receptacles remain unchanged from the previously filed application. The applicant is proposing the following authorizations to facilitate a design that responds to the unique site conditions as well as addressing flood resilience and concerns. To provide a new experience, the applicant has proposed an alcove level with seating and planting that connects to the lower level of the WPAA. Additionally, the applicant has also proposed a secondary path that connects the planted seating alcove area to the lower level. The applicant is also proposing to modify the retaining wall requirements from 60% to 92% to accommodate the seating along the perimeters of the waterfront public access area. The applicant is also proposing an approximately four-foot-tall terrace wall between the waterfront public access area and the terrace of the adjacent building to clearly delineate the public and private spaces. To ensure that the waterfront public access area does not experience inundation during, during serious flooding events as well as to match the grade of the elevated building entrances, the applicant proposes to raise the level of the waterfront yard approximately six feet above the 100-year floodplain. The applicant is also proposing to increase the grade of the visual corridor as, as an additional resiliency measure. And the department would like to note that as part of our efforts to update the flood text, the agency is also looking at ways to remove zoning challenges to making waterfront public access areas resilient. Finally, in accordance with the Greenpoint-Williamsburg waterfront open space master plan, the applicant proposes using the standard trash receptacle approved by Parks, which has the top opening that is eight inches wide. I'll be happy to take questions.
I just want to reemphasize what Daphne mentioned, that so many of our waterfront requirements predated Sandy and our focus on resilience. And as part of a comprehensive relook at our flood text, we think that we will be able to address many of these issues so we won't see applicants needing to come back to, so as to be able to do the right thing from a resiliency point of view. Any questions? Okay, then we will schedule this for a vote this coming Wednesday.
Item number six, page 130, is a pre-hearing of a zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District Two. Daphne Lundee will present.
This is a private application by Red Apple Real Estate requesting a zoning text amendment to modify ground floor use regulations within the special downtown Brooklyn district. The modifications would facilitate community facility uses as well as all non-residential uses permitted by the underlying zoning. And it would apply to buildings fronting on Myrtle Avenue between Ashland Place and Fleet Place. The project is located in Community District Two. The project is in downtown Brooklyn within the special downtown Brooklyn district. The surrounding area is characterized by a wide variety of uses, including residential, commercial, and community facility uses. As a part of the 2004 downtown Brooklyn rezoning, the project area was rezoned from R6 to R71-C24. Between 2010 and 2016, the project area was developed with three mixed-use buildings with commercial ground floors. Lot 101 is a nine-story building with approximately 100 units. Lot 1 is a 15-story building with approximately 230 units. And Lot 110 is a 15-story building with approximately 200 units. Within the special downtown Brooklyn district, special ground floor use regulations are in effect across major corridors, including the project area. The regulations are to encourage active ground floor uses that complement the area's role as a central business district. Within R71-C24 districts, only use groups 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9 are allowed. Red Apple Real Estate is requesting a zoning text amendment to allow for all non-residential uses permitted by the underlining R71-C24 district. In addition to the uses that are currently allowed within the special district, the proposed actions would allow for uses permitted by the underlining district, which include community facility uses such as healthcare facilities and schools. The proposed actions were certified and referred out by the department on May 18, 2018. At a general board meeting held by Community Board Two, the board voted to approve the zoning text amendment by unanimous vote of 11 in favor with no conditions. I'll be happy to take questions.
Questions from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Efron.
It was, I believe, was the last meeting before recess, so that might have been part of it.
Okay, then this item will go to public hearing this coming Wednesday.
Item number seven, page 142, is a pre-hearing of an acquisition for continued use of a daycare center in Brooklyn Community District Five. Alexandra Patti Diaz is here to present.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a proposed action by ACS and Dicas for a public facility acquisition to facilitate lease renewal for the continued use of Paul Arnold and Mary Schwartz Early Center as a childcare facility. The site has been used to provide childcare since 1971 and was subject to previous acquisitions approved by this commission 1986 and 1990. The daycare is located in East New York, neighborhood of Brooklyn Community District Five, at 452 Pennsylvania Avenue. The project site is located in the southwest corner of Pennsylvania Avenue with Dumont Avenue. Avenue, and the surrounding land use is predominantly residential. The area is surrounded by NITAP, community facilities, and retail along Livonia and Pennsylvania Avenue. The daycare is close to public transportation. Pennsylvania Avenue Station of the Three Line is on the same block of the center, as well as the bus stops of two lines that run along Pennsylvania Avenue and stop directly in front of the daycare. The daycare is located on a 6,000-square-feet privately-owned lot. The building is two stories and includes a total floor area of 18,000 square feet, all of which is used by the daycare center. The center serves up to 103 preschoolers of a total capacity of 114. Total enrollment ages from three to five-year-old. Children may attend from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. The center is staffed with 22 staff members, and the building includes a play area on the roof, multipurpose rooms, six classrooms, kitchen offices, and other support areas that all appear to be in good condition. Community Board Five approved with no recommendations in their full board meeting in July 25, and the BP, the borough president of Brooklyn, held a hearing in July 11, and we haven't received yet his recommendations. As soon as we receive it, we will distribute it to the commission. Thank you.
Questions from the commission. Okay, another matter for the public hearing on Wednesday.
Item number eight, page number 166, is a pre-hearing for zoning map and zoning text amendments and special permit in Queens Community District Two. Alexis Wheeler is here to present.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This project is for 6902 Queens Boulevard, and as previously presented, is a mixed-use development that would be consisting of MIH Option 2 map to it to produce 169 affordable units amongst the 561 total units. 242 proposed accessory parking spaces, and Commissioner Ortiz had correctly discovered an error in the calculations previously where the C23 overlay does require one space for every 400 square feet, whereas these calculations were based on one space for every 300 square feet, so the required for this project would in fact be 235 parking spaces. The context of this project is the eastern portion of Community District Two, and it's in the Woodside neighborhood, although quite close to Elmhurst, and this is bounded by a 200-foot-wide portion of Queens Boulevard to the north and to the east, 70th Street to the south, 47th Avenue, and to the west, 69th Street, as well as being cut on the corner by an elevated Long Island Railroad track. And the existing zoning here was part of the 2006 Maspath-Woodside rezoning to map R7X along this portion of Queens Boulevard, as well as the voluntary inclusionary housing. And the proposed rezoning here is really to extend the existing treatments of the R7X to the southern portion of the block, which is currently M11 zoning, and as well as extending the overlay, and then the entire block would be mapped with MIH. And just going through the existing site photos. And just to emphasize some of the current development that's happening nearby, there is an out parcel on the corner of 70th and Queens Boulevard, which is currently being developed as a nine-story building. Across the street is a seven-story building, and one block to the east is an 11-story building. All three of these are developing as of right, but they are not opting for the voluntary inclusionary, so they're really capping at approximately the 3.75 FAR. And so what's going to be facilitated here is a large-scale development, and because it's an irregularly shaped site, it's going to have a ground floor podium that will have commercial, but the majority of the housing is really situated in these two towers that will be on either end of the block with a sizable open space between the two towers as a residential amenity, as well as a ground floor through-block connection that would go along the LIRR embankment. And this is a ground plan showing both the residential fronting on Queens Boulevard, as well as the access points for the parking off of 69th Street. 70th and 47th are lined with residential entries, including maisonette entries off of 47th Avenue, and then both on 47th and on 69th are the access points to this publicly-accessible open space. And this is the typical tower plan for the podium and the upper levels, and a roof plan. And then the building sections, and the sections certainly portray the open space between the two towers. Of course, the general large scale is helping to facilitate the access to light and air between the two towers here. And this is a street section to demonstrate what the 200-foot-wide portion of Queens Boulevard looks like compared to the proposed tower with this taller tower being 181 and a half feet. And again, this is just to reinforce the two different levels or to avoid any confusion regarding what the open space and accessibility of it on the site would be. And just an enlargement of this open space, and a series of renderings. And so the three actions being sought to facilitate this project is the zoning map amendment to extend the existing zoning treatment, the zoning text amendment to map MIH Option 2 on this block, and the special permit for the general large scale. And again, just to see what the zoning map change would look like, the MIH map, and then these are the drawings to demonstrate where the permits would be for the general large scale. And this taller tower that's situated along Queens Boulevard would be looking for relief on both the height of 181 feet 6 inches and 18 stories, where the zoning would cap it at 140 feet and 14 stories. The lower tower would be asking just for relief on height of 151 feet 6 inches, but is complying with the number of stories of 14. And this section is just to demonstrate, again, where the waivers are being sought. And this was considered in a public hearing by Community Board Two. There were four hearings held total for this project, and the vote was held on June 7. The motion was proposed to oppose this application, and the community board voted 29 in favor and one opposed of this opposition. And at a hearing with the borough president, it was made clear to approve it, but with conditions, that the proposal should stay within the 140-foot height limit, that the applicant should work with SCA on siting a school to alleviate school overcrowding, and that the project should consider adjusting the depths of the proposed income bands for more housing opportunities for area residents. And I do have just one other appendix item that has come up recently to show, but that is going to be, that's something that the applicant can speak to further at the hearing, but the removal of Lot 8 from the general large scale plan, and that is this really small triangular lot on the side here. It's about 14 feet of frontage along 69th, and then these little segments are 40 and 43 feet in length, so it's a rather small little parcel.
Okay. Questions from the commission. Commissioner Deloos.
I'm just wondering, what's the environmental, does it trigger environmental review? I can't recall on whether or not the community boards or the borough president's recommendation on siting a school has to do with what was found in an environmental review.
The, in the environmental review, this was an EAS, and it was not deemed that there was any school impact. It is really, the current situation, though, is that the school is already crowded. There's a lot of sensitivity specifically around PS 29 in the area, which right now has a capacity of 1,020 students, and current enrollment is 1,451, so it's 142% over enrollment. So this is one of the most crowded school districts in the area. The applicant can speak further to this, but they are taking that suggestion into consideration right now and trying to see how they can accomplish some level of relief with the school.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, thank you. Some questions on the parking. What, just as, for my information, of the 242 accessory units, parking spaces, excuse me, how much of that is being generated, how much of that requires being generated by commercial versus residential?
Certainly. So 14 spaces would be generated by the retail, 25 spaces would be generated by the MIH units, and 196 by the market rate units, which is the 235 total. It's a 50% ratio for the market rate units, a 15% for the MIH, and then, as you discovered last time, it's the 1 to 400 for the C23.
Which is a little better than 1 to 300. Yeah, because I think, you know, when we talked about this last, I mean, I had noted that it's not a lot of retail space, and it exists somewhat in isolation from everything around it in terms, it's not creating a retail destination. And with, you know, 561 units of housing above, and also new development on the balance of that block, which I'm not sure how many, my recollection is, I don't know, it was like, I don't want to misspeak, but, you know, we're going to have a significant number of units at that location, being supported, supporting about 5,000 square feet of retail, so that will likely be very convenience-oriented. My question actually is, you know, if that space is not used for the commercial, it can just be, I mean, what is the procedure? How can the developer use that space if it's underutilized by the retail? Can they, you know, can it be used for the residential space? It's not dedicated for the retail. Is that correct? How does that work?
It's, I mean, it is, it has been analyzed as commercial space. Because of the commercial overlay, it wouldn't necessarily be, have the option of being residential, but it could have some other uses, such as community facility. There could be a nonprofit space that would use that.
But is it set aside and can only be used for non-residential uses, or is there flexibility?
There is flexibility.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Just that conversation, are you speaking of the parking spaces? Were you answering for the parking spaces or for the retail space?
The parking spaces.
Because I think there might have been some.
Oh, sorry. Yes, there was confusion there.
Thought there was confusion.
No, there is flexibility, though, around how the parking spaces can be utilized.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Levin.
I guess, for starters, what is the local AMI?
So the local AMI is, let's see, so I did a few different looks at this, because this is within Census Tract 489, and so the AMI for 489 is $62,500, which is, of course, higher than the New York area, but when you do sort of an expanded area of approximately a half mile around this area, it in fact drops to $50,515. And this is based on our current ACS data.
Okay, and they're proposing Option 2, which is at about that?
Which is 80%.
Right, so, right, so still above the numbers you just gave us.
It's above the second number that I gave you.
Yes, okay, good, understood. The borough president has, well, I guess the community board too, just doesn't like the size of this thing, and the borough president has recommended that we not waive the height limit. Do we know what the building would look like if the rezoning was approved but the bulk waiver was not? Is there an image or a rendering, or is it even possible to build with the rezoning but without the height waiver?
I don't have that in my materials, but we can speak to the applicant.
They can help us understand that when they come back.
Certainly.
I realize it may be a challenge because the site is kind of constrained in a way that may not make that feasible, but if an image could help us understand that, that'd be good.
Yes, so my understanding is that because of the very irregularly shaped site, it's actually very challenging to get all of the FAR to work on this site without the height waivers.
Okay, if we could draw the applicant out about that a little bit more on Wednesday, I think that would be good. And then finally, in the parcel, the 47th stretch that's being rezoned, there are two occupied buildings, I believe, one with the...
The Armenian Cultural Association is located in one.
So where is the Armenian center going, and where are the other building, according to the EAS, has a floral business in it or something?
Yes, so the Armenian National Committee is relocating, and they are looking for space in a rather broad geography right now, because it will have a lot to do with their membership and what location they're interested in being in, but in terms of the floral tenants, they are actually looking locally for new space.
Okay, well, were they both renters in the, are they going willingly or have been asked to leave by their landlords?
That's a question that the applicants can answer in the hearing.
I think that's it.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, we'll see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
I think you.
Item number nine, page 216, is a pre-hearing for an acquisition for continued use of a childcare center in Bronx Community District Two. Armani Legaris is here to present.
Okay, good afternoon, commissioners. The Lutheran Social Services of New York Early Life Center Two is the application. The applicants are ACS and DCAST. The location of the facility is at 888 West Chester Avenue in the Longwood Section of Bronx Community District Number Two, and the applicants are requesting the acquisition of privately-owned property for continued use of a childcare center. The background on this is that ACS has been at this location since 1971, and the last action approved by the commission was on December 5, 1990. The site is located in the Longwood Section of Bronx Community District Number Two in the South Bronx. The parcel is a corner lot, one-story building with a cellar, and the zone is R71 with a C14 commercial overlay. The surrounding area consists of multi-residential and commercial multiple dwellings. The, this photo, Ryan, the slide...
It's just moving because it's a screen. Somebody locked it.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, on this slide, you can actually see that you have the elevated number two and five subway lines which travel through the area with stops at Prospect and Intebell Avenues. There are also bus lines to provide access to the center. Again, the center, one-story building with a cellar, approximately 26,000 square feet of floor area, and the two rooftop play areas. The center is open from Monday through Friday from 7:30 AM to 6:00 PM. There are actually 35, no, 32 professional, 32 staff of professionals, and this is one photograph of the rooftop play area, the one on the first floor, top of the first floor. Community District Number Two did not vote on this application. The reason... The reason for that is that the agency and the community board could not agree on a date for scheduling their presentation to the Land Use Committee of the Community Board. The Bronx Borough President approved the application without any conditions. Are there any questions on this one?
The one thing that I do want to point out is, on both this application and the next one, is that the borough president, in his recommendations, is very much in sync with the feeling of many, if not the entire commission, with respect to the importance of good design and of sprinkling. And it's nice to see that vote of support for our position. Commissioner Arfum.
I was going to point that out. I also wanted to say exceptionally adorable children in the photo.
Oh, okay.
But I did wonder, was there any need for sound attenuation or improvement on the side facing the elevated? There are no photos of those classrooms, but I would hope that they'll be all to answer tomorrow if there's any concern about noise in those classrooms.
Yes, the agency's here.
Particularly since I think kids at that age still nap.
Okay.
Other questions?
So Manny, looking at the history here, this was established in '71.
Ah, yes.
A renewal in '91, or thereabouts, and presumably a termination around 2011. This is 20-year cycles, right?
Well, it was a 20-year approval, so 20 years, yes, 11.
So I'm just wondering, and I know there was a period when ACS was evaluating the need of, in the future of some of these facilities, I was just wondering, it's, it looks like it's about seven years after the expiration of the lease.
Yes, it is, yes.
Was there anything particular about this site that prolonged the negotiation?
I don't know, but I will have, I will, well, the agency's here now, and they're taking notes, and they'll be prepared to answer questions at Wednesday's public hearing.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Duak.
Just a question, that reminds me of an earlier project. How long can we, can a city agency keep a space under a license agreement until it goes into a formal lease?
Again, I don't know. That's something for the agency to respond to at Wednesday's public hearing.
Thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome.
That's great.
I think we'll all be waiting anxiously to hear that answer. Other questions? Okay, another matter for the public hearing on Wednesday.
Item number 10, page 235, a pre-hearing for an acquisition for continued use of a childcare center in Bronx Community District 9. Manny Legarres again will present.
Okay, the Watson Avenue Early Child Care Center, located in Community District Number 9. The applicants, ACS and the CAS, they are seeking acquisition of privately owned property for continued use of the childcare center. ACS has been at this location since 1975. Last action approved by the commission was in 1995, for 20 years. Site is located in the South Bronx. This is the Soundview area of Bronx Community District Number 9. The site is outlined in red, and as you can see by all the yellow, there's a lot of housing here, which is semi-detached and attached to one and two-family homes. The zone is R5, which allows the community, which allows the daycare center. The building is a two-story structure, approximately 31,000 square feet, with two rooftop play areas. Of this, approximately 20,000 is interior space and 11,000 rooftop play areas. The children are, well, the center is open from Monday through Friday, in this case from 8:00 to 6:00 p.m., and they receive a nutritious meal from ACS, supervised play time, and a very good curriculum. This is one of the rooftop play areas, is the one on top of the second floor. And the Community Board 9 unanimously approved the application by a vote of 20, 0, 0, and the Bronx Borough President also approved the application. Are there any questions?
I'd say I'd be hard-pressed to say which are the cuter kids, and this one is the proper.
They were proposing.
Any other questions? Any questions or comments? Okay, so this is ready for public hearing on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
Item number 11, page 256, is a pre-hearing for a site selection for an animal shelter in Bronx Community District 10. Christine Camilleri is here to present.
This application was certified on April 23, and then duly referred to the affected community board and Bronx Borough President for review. As a reminder, this application is a site selection of city-owned property to facilitate the development of a full-service animal care facility with a veterinary clinic and accessory office space in Bronx Community District 10. The applicants are the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene and Department of Citywide Administrative Services. And I'll walk you through the proposed site facility in context in just a moment to refamiliarize you with that. But just as a reminder, the project that this action is requested to facilitate is part of a commitment made by the de Blasio administration to open a full-service animal care facility in each of the five boroughs, and would be the Bronx's first full-service animal care facility. Along with that, just one note, that this past June, since this application certified, there was legislation passed requiring a full-service animal shelter in each of the five boroughs. And the proposed facility is intended to serve as a new model for how the city cares for its population of homeless and abandoned animals through providing a broader range of care services and seeking to overall increase adoption rates. And the future facility would also house the headquarters of Animal Care Centers of New York City, which is the nonprofit that's been managing these facilities since 1984 pursuant to a contract with the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. And so the proposed site is located within the northeastern Bronx in Community District 10, in the neighborhood of Baychester. And here is an aerial view. The proposed site is outlined with the red dotted line. It's about a half a mile south of Co-op City. And here is an area map for some additional context. The proposed site is, again, called out with a red line here. And you can see that the site itself, as well as the, a lot of the single-story commercial uses that are along Bartow Avenue, which is really, you know, what is predominant in terms of the built context, most of that area lies within a commercial C43 zoning district. That zoning district does not permit the proposed use as of right. For that reason, the applicant sought a mayoral zoning override to allow the proposed use on this specific site, which was granted. And some, here are some aerial photos. You can see that, in photos number 2 and 4, that although the site is unimproved, there are a number of trailers owned by the New York City Police Department that currently occupy the site. And DCAST is working with NYPD to identify a site to relocate those trailers prior to the start of construction. We've included an illustrative site plan to give you a better sense of the conceptual layout and some of the programmatic needs of the facility. And it is envisioned to be a two-story facility. The, just as a reminder, a full-service animal care facility, what that means is that the proposed facility would both intake lost and homeless animals, as well as provide a range of animal care services, things like veterinary care, as well as counseling and behavioral training. Those uses would be located on the first floor, along with a veterinary clinic, and the ACC offices would be on the second floor. And again, this would be the Bronx's first full-service animal shelter, which is, for this reason, makes, is, this project is a mayoral priority. And the hope is that by pairing this range of services with a more welcoming and visible location, that adoption rates would be higher. Regarding public review, the Bronx Community Board 10 held a public hearing and vote on June 18. And their recommendation was to, they approved an amended resolution with a condition that the facility, while they approve of a full-service animal care facility being located in the Bronx, they do not approve of this specific location for that facility. And the Bronx Borough President voted to, held a public hearing on July 19, and voted to disprove this application. Both the community board and borough president cited a few specific concerns about the project and site, namely that there was a lack of, they named that a lack of outreach was conducted in advance of public review. A few concerns were also expressed, this parcel has been flagged by residents of Co-op City to be used for construction of a youth recreational center. And both the board, as well as the borough president, expressed concerns that the site is not centrally located in the Bronx or in the city overall, and some concerns about traffic in an area that, you know, is, where Bart, the Bartow Mall and Bay Plaza do generate some traffic already. And so I'll just close with the rendering. To give you a sense of what the facility could look like, the final design would be subject to review by the Public Design Commission.
Yes, Commissioner Capelli.
I am somewhat disappointed there weren't actual photos of cute animals. The, perhaps. Did the community board or the borough president offer an alternative site? Or is this just, we like the idea, but not here?
Sure, not specifically in their recommendation. In public review, there's been some discussion, but nothing official. It's not been a part of the recommendation.
Yes, Commissioner Deloos.
So you mentioned that residents of Co-op City, and perhaps the borough president, had flagged this city on site for youth and recreational center use. I guess I'm wondering how that desire was made known, and whether the mayor's staff or the folks who put this proposal together could have, you know, how they may have come to know that to be the case.
Sure, and I think, I think we, I will, the applicants will be able to speak to that on Wednesday, certainly. I think I will defer to them to respond to that.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi. Remind me, is this a completely new facility?
Yes.
And so these are 116 new jobs?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And for these facilities, are most of these jobs local?
The applicants, including Animal Care Centers of New York City, have expressed a desire to hire locally, as locally as they can. And I would, they can elaborate on that on Wednesday.
That would be great, thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
And I hope also on Wednesday, they can tell us about the accessibility issue that was identified by the, I guess by the borough president. It does seem a little bit remote, but I'm sure they have a plan for it.
Yeah, sure, sure, for sure. I know, I do know that they have, as part of their search, access to public transportation was one of the criteria that they looked at. The Five Train at Gun Hill Road is about a mile away. The BX12 select bus service and BX12 and BX5 stop right in front of the site, but, for sure.
They could tell us operationally a little bit, how people are going to come and go. That would be great.
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Sorillo.
I would just add that in the borough president's recommendation, it mentions that he was told that 14 sites had been reviewed, and perhaps it could be helpful to learn as to why this was the site versus any of the other options that might have been available, given what the issue is. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, they can definitely speak to that.
Other questions? Yes, Vice Chair Knuckles.
It looked like parking is the current utilization of the site? What's, trailers?
Oh, current, the current use, yes. Yes, that are owned by NYPD. But they will be relocated prior to the start of construction. I know that that's been, the search for the site is actively happening right now.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, so this is ready for a public hearing on Wednesday.
Item 12, page 285, is a pre-hearing for a special permit in the Bronx Community District 8. Chuton Horseman is here to present.
So this application is coming back for a pre-hearing by the Hebrew Home for the Aged at Riverdale. They're seeking a special permit and natural area authorizations in order to facilitate the development of a continuing care retirement community as part of an expansion to the existing Hebrew home in the Riverdale neighborhood of Bronx Community District 8. The proposed actions would facilitate the development of a single building containing three wings on an approximately 32-acre campus to allow the first CCRC use in the city of New York. So to give you a little bit of background, again, on the long-term care facility, it was defined in ZQA, as well as the CCRC and the CCRC use. The CCRC model is an aging-in-place model, requiring a life care contract, which requires a mix of independent living, assisted living, and nursing care. All three components are regulated by New York State Department of Health and New York State Department of Financial Services. The, it is located in Community District 8, in the northwest corner of the city, in Riverdale. So for some existing context, you have the Hebrew Home, which is outlined in red. Just to the north, you have the College of Mount St. Vincent. You have the Hudson River and Metro North, just to the west. The Skyview Apartments to the east, as well as some single-family residences. And within the Skyview, there's three 20-story residential buildings with approximately 1,300 units. So again, for the uses, you have in the surrounding area, in a 600-foot radius, excluding the Hudson River, about 60% are institutional uses. But I want to also point out the single-family areas, just to the south, a little bit to the east, and then to the northeast, as well as Skyview. And then the zoning in the area on the existing Hebrew Home campus, the northern half is, where their existing Hebrew Home is, the R4. On the southern portion, it's an R11 zoning district. The entire area is within the Special Natural Area District. Here, again, for some context, you can see how the grade really slopes from west to east. You have the Hudson River and the Metro North, and then there's a kind of initial grade change moving up. The campus, which is flat, and then on the other east of Palisade Avenue, you have another grade change up to where you have Skyview. The grade change from the Hebrew Home to Skyview is about 120 feet. So on the existing site plan and campus, the northern portion is where the existing Hebrew Home is today. It has 879 skilled nursing beds, 35 assisted living units, and one building, which has 137 nonprofit residences. You can see on the southern portion, which has the existing Cardinal Spellman Building, it's four stories in the R11 portion. The areas with the kind of brownish color are the buildings that would be demolished. So you have the Gold Fine, the Cardinal Building, and then some utility buildings under the proposal. So under the proposal, the area outlined in red would be the boundaries of the continuing care retirement community. The area in purple would be the new independent living building. Again, there's, it's a single building with three wings. The current proposal is a 12-story wing on the northern portion, a six-story wing, and a four-story wing. Altogether, the building would have 388 independent living units. The CCRC as a whole would then also have 105 assisted living units and 588 nursing beds. The net change on the site altogether would be 388 increased independent living units, 72 increased assisted living units, a reduction of 291 nursing beds, and 85 parking spaces. Again, just for more context, the location of the proposed building is in purple versus where the existing buildings are that would be demolished. So a couple of the design notes are, the building would be fully connected, so there are connectors between the wings, but also between the wings would be one story, so there'd be... so there'd be site lines through, from Palisade Upland Community. The bulk of the building would be on the R4 district with the 12-story wing. You can see the context of the 12-story on the existing campus and this building, the Resnick Building, which is 127 feet. The proposal would be for the 12-story building to be about 144 feet. The applicant is seeking several actions. The first is a special permit. This slide shows the existing context with the existing buildings. The red here are these, the Gold Fine, and the existing building should be demolished, and then how it would look under the proposal. So this would, the special permit is for the use of the long-term care facility, CCRC, within the R1 portion, which is the southern two wings on the site. The next action is for the SNAD authorization for height. This would be for the R4 portion, the northern building, or the northern wing. R4 permits a 45-foot maximum building height, 25 feet base before a sky exposure plane. There are also four SNAD authorizations being sought, one for the modification of topography on the Tier 1 site, for a modification of a steep slope or steep slope buffer to modify the rock outcopping, and modification of the tree requirements. In order to meet the findings for those authorizations, the applicant is seeking to plant 215 new trees, 776 new shrubs, ground cover would be replaced, and any impacted areas would return to the pre-work condition before the work could be fully signed off on or completed. So the community board held four public meetings, land use committee meetings and public hearings on the application. They held a vote on June 18th. The vote was 10 in favor, 18 opposed, and two abstentions. The resolution resulted in a disapproval recommendation of the application. The Borough President held a public hearing on July 12th with approval with the following conditions. The 12-story building, or the 12-story wing would be reduced to a height no taller than the Resnick Building. So you can see the current proposal is 144 feet. Under the new, it would be no taller than Resnick, 127 feet. So it would reduce the 12-story to about 10 stories. A reduction of this four, six and four-story wings to five and three stories. So there would be a story reduction from those two wings. 84 new trees planted, limiting the height of the connectors to one story between the wings. Providing public access for a Hudson River Greenway connector, which has been proposed in the community. Open space in perpetuity on the south campus on areas that did not have any of the new buildings. Moving the northern entrance further in to reduce traffic on Palisade. Green roofs on the proposed CCRC buildings. An advisory committee would be created during construction, the construction period. And no construction vehicles would be parked on public or private streets surrounding the area. So I also wanted to add that as of last week, an MNO agreement was reached with some members of the community. The community group is the Riverdale Nature Preservancy, Skyview, which is the apartment buildings just to the east, the Sigma Place Homeowners, which is the single-family residences just to the east, and the Riverdale Community Coalition. So under their MNO agreement, they agreed to essentially many of these changes. So I think the applicant will come and speak much more to the details of what that means at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Questions from the commission?
Oh, sorry. So regarding the environmental review, before certification, a conditional negative declaration was issued. The condition was that the applicant would provide off-street, off-site parking, and a shuttle would be, would shuttle the construction workers to and from the development site for the duration of the construction period. There'd be a restrictive declaration, and it would be to avoid any potential adverse impacts. So there was a 30-day comment period where we actually received 12 email or comment letters. After we reviewed everything and after taking them into consideration, they didn't change the conditional negative declaration determination. So I also wanted to add one additional piece. Commissioner Cirillo, at the certification, had a question regarding the plan for the residents and basically how they would be impacted that were living in the building. So the Hebrew home responded that the Gold Fine Building, which is the building that would be removed, which has 150 beds, it would be decanted over a six-month period to other buildings. This was done with another building, the Gilbert Pavilion, when it was renovated. And so there'd also need to be a plan subject to approval with New York State Department of Health for this. Oftentimes slowing admissions through attrition and moving residents to other buildings is how they've done that in the past. But they can also respond to that more on Wednesday. Thank you.
Sorry to have cut you off, Jutan. Questions? Commissioner Levin.
I have a couple of questions. Did I understand correctly? It looks like at the community board, the land use committee brought a recommendation to approve, and then the full board did a turnaround?
So the community board, their land use committee is actually made up of all the board members. So they actually had a very active discussion with everyone at those meetings. They brought a resolution which would be approving with conditions. The entire resolution, I believe, is in your package. It did bring a lot of the points that the Borough President did recommend, but they, there was a couple, I guess, issues. One was that some people were never going to vote for that. And the other was that they just couldn't get some of the finer points where everyone could agree to the resolution in time. There was a lot of discussion and debate.
And it was getting late, and everyone walked out, and this is, okay, stop.
Yeah, there was a lot of discussion on it. And some people liked it, some people needed one revisions, some people weren't going to. So they just, you could see it was kind of a mix on the vote there.
Okay. I gather the greatest sensitivity in the surrounding community is to the height of the three new buildings. Can you provide any context to that? Because these, these buildings are really quite remote from other buildings around there. And honestly, well, I was up there when there was lots of leaves on the trees. But from Skyview, from the ground level at Skyview, you couldn't see anything at the Hebrew home. So help, can you help us understand the nature of the height concern?
Yeah, I mean, height was one of the issues. There was traffic, if there was just general use. Some people had concerns about any type of independent living facility being in this community and in R1 zoning district. I think to kind of make a statement based on the Skyview residences, I think some people will come and share their opinion.
Probably challenge my point of view about it.
Yeah, I mean.
They live there, I don't.
Yeah, so, you know, I probably will stay a little neutral on that.
I'll just, I'll just. Good diplomat.
I'll just emphasize what Jutan said. It's a 120-foot height difference.
But so is some of the motivation for arguing to take off floors, it's not really about height but about reducing the amount of use on the site?
It would be about height as well. So it would be about the sightlines from Skyview.
It's a physical thing.
Correct, yeah, it's physical as well, for sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Madin.
Jutan, thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of technical questions. Knowing that the site slopes down to the south and to the west with the highest portion being where the existing Resnick Building is.
Correct.
What is the differential, if any, between the Resnick Building and the tallest 12-story building, if there is one?
I would have to get, I can have the applicant speak to those specifics. I don't have those numbers with me right now.
Because while it may be 12 stories, the sightlines may be the same based on the fact that it's on a slope. So the number of stories in this instance wouldn't really deter from the existing sightline of the Resnick Building.
I think that might be why one of the agreements was no taller than Resnick, because that's kind of a existing context with that height. And so then not having the height of the proposal being taller than Resnick.
I understand that, but from a baseline building, it is higher. But the fact that it's on a slope may make it either lower or in line or maybe slightly taller than the Resnick Building. So if we can get those heights, that would really, exactly.
Get it for the same data.
That would really help.
Yes, Commissioner Deloos.
I'm wondering at the hearing if we could hear what kind of demand there are for the beds, for these kinds of uses overall? And then if they have any data for the demand specific to the Borough or the community board, it'd be helpful to know.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, this will be our final public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Items 13 and 14 are two city council modifications. The first is a modification to the East 33rd Street rezoning, a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Manhattan, Community District 10. The modification proposed would add to the mandatory inclusionary housing option 2, and that is the extent of that. I believe there are materials in your package on that.
And I would ask for an assent by show of hands to let the council know that this mod is within scope. Thank you.
The second is a modification to the special inward district rezoning. Sarah Elmore is here to describe the modifications.
Hey, good afternoon, commissioners. These are the city council modifications regarding the inward rezoning. The commission voted to approve the applications for map amendment, text amendment, disposition, acquisition, UDAP, and city map amendment on June 25, 2018. On August 2, 2018, the city council land use committee voted to approve the aforementioned applications with modifications to the applications for map amendment, text amendment, and acquisition. The modifications to the application for a map amendment are as follows. Modify the C44A and R7A districts along the Dykman Extension west of Broadway to the underlying C83 and R72 districts. Modify the C45D and C44D districts along Dykman Street to the underlying C44 district, with the exception of the northwest corner. Modify the C45D and C44D districts along Broadway and West 207th Street to the underlying R7D district. And would also modify the commercial overlay to C24, which the underlying is a C14. And modify a portion of the C44D district in the Upland Wedge, highlighted on this map in red, to C45D. The modifications to the application for a text amendment are as follows. To modify the MIH boundaries to align with the modified map amendments. And to modify MIH options from options 1 and 2 to options 1 and the deep affordability option. To modify the special inward district boundaries to remove the Dykman Extension to the west of Broadway. And to create sub-districts F and sub-areas D1, D2, D3, and D4. In sub-district D, the special inward district will modify the maximum base heights from 105 feet to 75 feet in sub-area D2, from 105 feet to 65 feet in sub-area D3, and from 105 feet to 85 feet in sub-area D4. In sub-district F, the special inward district will continue to allow second-story retail and physical culture establishments as of right, and to require hotel special permits. The special inward district will also allow new quality housing developments to rise an additional story if it sets back from a side lot line containing legally required windows. And the special inward district will also allow reduced parking requirements for new quality housing developments, provided that a minimum of 20% of the residential floor area be affordable to households at an AMI of 60% or lower. They will also remove the ground floor requirements along Broadway, with the exception of the area to remain C44D, and to remove the ground floor requirements along Dykman and West 207th Street, except for the storefront limitations on bank and loan offices. They will also modify, oops, sorry, transit easement zone for the Dykman Street A-Train station to align with the modified map amendment, C44D boundaries. And finally, the modification to the application for the acquisition would increase the acquisition area for the library condo from 18,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet. The proposed modifications raises no land use or environmental issues, requiring further review.
Any questions or comments from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Cirillo.
This is really a general question that I, in terms of the sort of the purview and the action that we're taking about just determining whether or not the changes are in scope. So it's in part just a confirmation-related question. In this process, we've seen commitments made in the negotiation of, in the legislative process. We are not acting on any of those things because obviously they would not be in scope. Is that correct?
Yes, for a number of reasons. There is a separate agreement called a POA, a points of agreement, which is signed off on by Deputy Mayor Alicia Glenn. In this instance, I think it was a 37-page document, and it laid out a series of commitments by the city. Some of them are capital commitments, others of them are operational matters. We've seen a POA in connection with each of the neighborhood rezonings. Those, they extend far beyond land use matters. What comes back to us are those changes that affect the land use matters that were before us. So we are not opining as to the wisdom of these matters that go beyond our remit, but rather a purely technical question as to whether the very surgical changes that Sarah has just defined are within the scope of what was reviewed during the environmental and the land use process.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful. I hoped that that was the answer and expected that it would be, but I just wanted to ask the question because I think, for whatever reason, this particular one, there are some commitments that have been made that I would think if we were acting on them, there would be more information that we might want to hear about and learn about and involve the public in the discussion about. So it makes me comfortable in terms of, you know, agreeing to this part of the process, but I just did want to be sure about that. So thank you.
Any other comments? Vice Chair Knuckles.
Well, the community has spoken, so to speak, and that is, of course, respected. But when, you know, I saw the exclusion of the so-called commercial U, which was certainly a focal point of a lot of the discussion leading up to the various determinations. I think my concern goes to the law of unintended consequences. Because I think by excluding this area, which is a focal point of, it's a transit hub. I mean, it has the culmination of the A-Train, and there's a stop on Number 1 and a couple of others. I think this is, it's not overly speculative, I think, to anticipate that there will be development here around these transit hubs. And without the MIH requirement, you could see conceivably the kind of market rate development that I think the community is very, very concerned about. And a development that would now be tempered by MIH requirements. So presumably, this is within scope, but I think it raises, from my mind, a number of concerns about what the potential impact of this particular decision could be.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I think you are channeling the sentiments of many in the department. Yes, Commissioner Ortiz.
And I would have to concur with that. Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
But as a point of information, do we know how many proposed affordable housing units would have been in the commercial U? What's the impact on the future of affordable housing?
Specific of, like, the approximated affordable housing, I don't know. But I can tell you that the increment was approximately 460-some units that were in that located. So about 20% of that would be roughly, would have been located.
So 400 total units?
Yeah, 400, about 460 incremental units were to be expected to be located in the commercial U.
Okay. And remind me, how many, how many units were in the, how many affordable units were in the rezoning as a whole? I mean, are we losing a big chunk of the affordable units that were?
Well, I mean, I think overall, and like I said, this is, I'm speaking about the overall increment, not necessarily just the number of what was, you know, the 20% of the residential floor area being projected. But it's about a 10% reduction.
Reduction, okay, thank you.
It's also a reduction in what the commercial potential[1761.90]
would have been along three subway stops along the "commercial U". Yes, Commissioner Deloos.
I definitely, you know, hear the concerns of fellow commissioners. And I would, and I would just say, you know, obviously, this is a major transit hub. There's also an area with existing, a lot of existing rent-stabilized housing. And so like that, despite the new legislation for the pilot, for the certificate of no harassment, since we don't yet have legislation to allow tenants a right to return, those concerns about displacement are real, especially in these communities. And so although new units would be created that are permanently affordable, it doesn't mean that those tenants that are probably earning less than the AMI levels than what the new housing would be would be addressed. So that's like, from a public policy perspective, until we address that concern, we're going to continue to see this over and over again.
Other comments? Okay, then I would ask for an assent by show of hands to let the council know that their mods are within scope. Okay, it's adopted.
Future votes. Staff have prepared reports for the following projects to be decided on August 8. 57 Caton Place rezoning. 1881, 1883 McDonald Avenue rezoning. O'Neill's rezoning. Also scheduled for decision on August 8 are the following: Cedar Cliff Road and Hillside Avenue, certification for future subdivision in the Special Hillside's Preservation District in Staten Island Community District 1. 151 McBane Avenue, a certification for future subdivision in the Special South Richmond Development District in Staten Island Community District 3. Detroit and Edge Grove Avenue, a certification for future subdivision in the Special South Richmond Development District in Staten Island Community District 3. And there's a chair cert for school seats on that one as well. And the Silver Lake Cemetery, an authorization to modify tree preservation and planting requirements in the Hillside, Special Hillside's Preservation District in Staten Island Community District 1. We will schedule the following for a decision on August 22. 27 East Fourth Street, which is a text amendment and a special permit in Manhattan Community District 2. I believe Bob Tuttle is here to discuss the materials that you received in your package.
Thank you, Ryan. Good afternoon, commissioners. So this is an application by Kalidop 2 Park Corporation for a zoning text amendment to Section 74712 that would allow by special permit the modification of use and bulk regulations for sites approved of the one-story building in M15A and M15B zoning districts located within the NoHo Historic District Extension. And it would grant the special permit to the site at 27 East Fourth Street, which, there we go, is centered here on the map in the red boundary. So the public hearing for this proposal was held on July 11, 2018. A focus of testimony during the public hearing related to how construction on the proposed development site might affect the Merchant's House Museum, which is an individual and interior landmark that's just to the east of the proposed development site. And the museum is shown here in the forefront of the image on the right. So we'll begin today's post-hearing follow-up with that issue. And then we'll also discuss other topics raised during the public hearing, including spot zoning, favorite topic, the transfer of development rights from development site to an adjacent site, and lot line windows on a building to the west of the proposed development site. So regarding construction concerns related to Merchant's House Museum. In today's package, there are letters from the Department of Parks and Recreation, the Department of Buildings, and the Landmarks Preservation Commission. Additionally, in the July 20 package, you received the applicant's preliminary construction protection plan. Another copy of that was provided to you today. And the certificate of appropriateness permit that was issued by the LPC for the proposed development. Now, as you may recall, Parks is a property owner of Merchant's House Museum. The Historic House Trust of New York City is a public-private partnership with Parks that oversees the care and operation of the museum. And together, they maintain the museum in a state of good repair. Now, the day-to-day operations of the museum and ownership of the museum's collection rest with the Old Merchant's House, Inc., which is a member of the trust. Now, in its letter, Parks commits to help coordinate with the applicant and Old Merchant House, Inc. to enable a comprehensive pre-construction condition survey of the museum's existing interior and exterior condition. Analysis from this survey will be used to inform the applicant's methods of construction and the creation of a monitoring and protection plan, which is also known as an M&amp;P plan. Parks also commits to remain involved throughout demolition, excavation, and construction of the proposed development site to ensure that the M&amp;P plan is adhered to and then modified if necessary. In the DOB letter, Buildings provides the tools at its disposal and an overview of the applicant and adjacent property owner's responsibilities, which you will likely recall from the presentation by DOB's chief engineer, Tim Lynch, to the commission on July 9. In DOB's letter, they recommend that the applicant hire a New York State-registered design professional, acceptable to Parks and DOB, to perform an independent, third-party peer review of the monitoring thresholds to set forth in the M&amp;P plan and to determine the extent of survey and the construction monitoring results from the proposed design and construction. They also recommend that such construction monitoring records be maintained at the proposed development site and made available to the city, including Parks, DOB, and LPC. That all monitoring reports and survey data be provided to Parks at the frequency agreed to in the M&amp;P plan, and that any proposed construction documents for the proposed development site be submitted to Parks. City planning fully supports these recommendations, but I will note that since this is not a land use issue, these conditions would not be appropriate to include within the CPC report. We believe that our sister agencies can work with the applicant to incorporate DOB's recommendations into their future plans. In its letter, LPC clarifies what was considered by the LPC commissioners during their review of the proposed building design at 27 East Fourth Street. The letter notes, one, that there was much discussion during the public hearing process about the risk of impact to the exterior and interior of the Merchant's House Museum. And while the Landmarks Law doesn't require the LPC to consider impacts of work on buildings outside of the historic district, the LPC will consider impacts of work on individual landmarks, and it did so in this case. That, two, the LPC routinely approves new construction adjacent to historic buildings and recognizes that such construction can occur safely and appropriately. The letter then notes many of the DOB regulations that Chief Engineer Lynch addressed before you all on July 9, including TPPN 10 of 88 and the construction protection plan. Three, in approving the new building, the LPC explicitly recognized that the work was occurring next to the museum, and the LPC required that, and I quote, "The excavation will be supervised by a professional licensed engineer, and that the applicant will provide all appropriate safeguards to ensure that the structural integrity of the adjacent buildings are protected, and will carefully monitor the excavation and construction to ensure that the work will not diminish the special architectural or historical character to adjacent buildings." And four, the applicant is required, after receiving approval from CPC, to submit the final DOB construction plans and filed drawings to LPC for review. These materials will include the supportive excavation drawings and materials as well as the protection plan. So together, the city has a robust strategy to ensure that comprehensive monitoring and protection is developed and followed. And before I move on, are there any questions on this topic?
Yes, Commissioner Afron.
Thank you for the clarification. I'm just wondering if there is ever a situation where the commission does opine on a historic artifact or the condition, I mean, I can think of one entirely unrelated, but certainly in the case near Collect Pond and on 126th Street, when we were concerned about unmarked graves. There was a discussion of it within the City Planning Commission. And I understand this is a building of historic significance, but it does seem to be a New York City artifact in a completely different way. And I'm just wondering if there's any condition or any precedent for, or even any treatment of either works of art of significance or artifacts of New York City significance that are slightly different than landmarked buildings. And I open that up not to answer now, but just to wonder whether that's something we should take into account.
I'm glad you're not putting us on the spot to answer now because I think this will be a case of first impression. The other thing that I do want to note is that one would have to wish that were an as-of-right development to go forward, that the city agencies would coordinate because, again, it's a valued landmark building. But the fact that this has come before us in a discretionary review is actually quite felicitous because this matter, this Merchant House Museum, the need to be so careful during the construction is now on the radar screens of the commissioners at Parks and also at Buildings who share the concern of the commission. And so I'm oddly, because it's a discretionary review process, it's getting more attention likely than it might have gotten otherwise. Yes, Commissioner Levin.
And that's precisely the point of public review. So I'm glad the system is working. And it's really nice to see the letters from the commissioners of Parks and DOB confirming that they now are aware of this. We didn't have that direct element before. And so I think that's all to the good. I do not, I've only skimmed their letters. And I also, it's very nice to have the response from Landmarks Preservation Commission as well so that we understand the care they gave to this because there were assertions made in the public hearing that they didn't care or didn't think about it. But all three of those letters, I've only just skimmed them, they seem to focus on the building itself. And we heard testimony about the care that may need to be taken during the construction period with the contents of the house, which, of course, are also historic artifacts. And as you explained, those are not city property. Those are owned by the organization that is running the Old Merchant House Museum. But it would seem to me that those contents are going to need some protection as well. And I think it really is a public responsibility, and I'm not sure it's ours, but somewhere in this public review process, responsibility to know that that organization is going to have the resources they need to take care of the contents during the construction period.
Okay.
Maybe that's a funding request that comes out of the city council consideration. I don't know, but they need care as well.
Other questions? Okay, then thank you. If we get additional information, we would obviously bring it back before the date of the vote.
Okay, thank you. Also, during the public hearing, the commission heard testimony that the proposed project was a spot zoning since it would benefit a single development interest. Spot zoning is defined as a legally impermissible manipulation of the city's power to enact zoning regulations in accordance with a well-considered plan. In this case, the property owner seeks a text amendment to Section 74712 of the zoning resolution, which governs development in historic districts. That would enable the site to apply for the use and bulk waivers afforded in that section. The commission has modified Section 74712 multiple times, including in 2003 for 465 Broadway, in 2006 for 311 West Broadway, in 2013 for 300 Lafayette Street, and most recently in 2016 for 150 Worcester. These approvals were similar to the subject proposal in that they provided a mechanism for underdeveloped sites to more fully contribute to the neighborhood context with its varied building heights and its uses that are predominantly buildings with dwelling units on the upper floors and retail uses on the lower floors or all commercial buildings. The department believes that the 27 East Fourth Street application is not an ad hoc zoning legislation that would affect this property without proper regard to the needs and the design of the community as a whole. We therefore dismiss any claims that the application would result in spot zoning. Are there any questions on this issue? Next in your packet, the applicant provided a letter regarding the transfer of development rights from the proposed site to the adjacent property, also owned by the applicant, at 403 Lafayette Street. 403 Lafayette Street is, has a number 3 on it. It's in gray, and it, it's along Lafayette Street, obviously. And the back end of that lot touches the back end of the lot, of the subject property, along Fourth Street. The applicant states in the letter that it operates a successful business on that lot and does not have plans to discontinue that business in order to redevelop that site. Are there any questions on this issue?
Commissioner Afron.
Assuming the action goes through, they could do, they could transfer air rights in the future. In other words, it becomes out of our jurisdiction once that decision is made.
We haven't analyzed an air or a development rights transfer on those lots, so they may not have the 10 feet required. When they do, when they submit their filing to DOB, it would be clear if they have the 10 feet that they need. But it is also that lot is within the historic district. So they would have to go back to LPC for any changes to that development site.
So we would see it again if there was anything of concern, right?
We would see it again if they, if their proposed design required bulk changes or use changes.
But I would note that any additional transfers to the Fourth Street site would.
Right, it can only go to the Lafayette site. Okay.
It would likely come back. It's a parking garage, so the use change would probably tend towards residential or commercial. So likely, a redevelopment of that site would come before this commission as well.
As you said, it shouldn't concern us on the issues that we have before us.
Correct.
Yes, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Just for my identification, just reiterate, what's a 10-foot requirement again in terms of the?
In order to transfer development rights from one property to another, you have to have at least 10 feet that are contiguous between the two zoning lots.
Thank you.
Just a question. Can that be changed by the City Planning Commission? Can that be waived?
My understanding is that it's a DOB interpretation. So no, unless we were to further define that, I would require.
So we have the power to further define it, should we?
I would.
I'd say that would be a heavy lift, given the precedent.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, and then your packet also includes a lot line window declaration for the property at 25 East Fourth Street. So shown here, that property is the kind of white ghosted building. The dark gray is the, and then the light gray is the proposed building. So everywhere where there's the windows, that is the property to the east at 25 East Fourth Street. So the declaration was agreed upon when the building was converted to joint living work quarters for artists in 1997. And that declaration states that the windows along the easterly lot line wall of the building will not be used as sources for any required light and air for residential use, units. It further provides procedures if a building is constructed on 27 East Fourth Street for promptly sealing the windows and altering the affected units to ensure that the configuration does not require the use of lot line windows to light and ventilate any of the rooms. And then I'm happy to answer any questions on this or anything in general. Yes, we like foresight.
And is that it, Bob?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Also, scheduled for decision on August 22 is 3122, 3136 Victory Boulevard rezoning in Staten Island Community District 2. I believe there was materials in your package, and the Staten Island office is present if there are any further questions.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes, thank you. I would just say that I want to really express my appreciation for the work that the staff has done in terms of follow-up from the public hearing. I am aware that there have been some very productive discussions between the applicant and Borough Hall and the council member. And just, I think this is in the, in the materials, but that since our public hearing, the applicant has confirmed that the other two property owners of the three involved in the rezoning geography have all agreed to signing a restrictive declaration, entering into a restrictive declaration. Obviously, we have not seen those materials. Whether or not they're in scope for us to review is also a question, but obviously steps in the right direction. And hopefully, we will remain updated on the efforts that everyone is putting in to getting to the point where we can comfortably support this. Obviously, I know that some of this work may not be done by the time we vote. And we don't have the privilege of voting with conditions, but we will see how this plays out. But I do appreciate all of the work, as I said, because I do know that this is moving in a direction that hopefully will work out between Borough Hall and the council members. So a little more to follow, but again, steps in the right direction to protect the community from this particular issue of billboards in the neighborhood.
And again, if any new information comes in, we'll include it for the next review session.
Okay. Okay. We have post-hearing follow-up on the following. The Throggs Neck bid. See any questions on that? The Hudson Square amended bid. 116 West 23rd Street, the Burlington sign. 110 East 16th Street. Note, Commissioner Efron, you recused on this. Yes. The NYPD 112th Street parking lease. The Lefferts Boulevard rezoning. And then on 2701 and 2632 Jackson Avenue, we have the Queens Office. Blake Montith is here with a short presentation.
Good afternoon, Chair Lago, Commissioners. On July 23rd, the applicants presented their proposals for 2701 Jackson Avenue and 2632 Jackson Avenue in Long Island City, and answered your questions about the project. Today, I'm here to explain the Department of City Planning's role in determining the amount of city-owned property that could be purchased in this situation. I'll also share an update on the Queensborough President's recommendation and answer any outstanding questions you may have. So as you will recall, the city-owned property at 2701 Jackson Avenue, or the northern site, has split lot zoning with M15R73 zoning to the north of the block center line and M15R9 zoning to the south of the block center line. And the development site is included in this higher-density zoning district. In this case, the zoning does not allow for a transfer from the lower-density district or portion of the city-owned lots to the higher-density portion of the city-owned lots. So in this case, the applicant is requesting to transfer all of the development rights from within the same zoning district. The city-owned lots would retain 37,290 square feet of development rights if these actions are approved, and our agency has not identified any viable adjacent development sites that could use these remaining development rights. So you will see in this illustration, the 2701 Jackson Avenue site is the blue building on the left, or the proposed building, and the 2632 Jackson Avenue site is the proposed building on the right. For the 2632 Jackson Avenue site, zoning, in this case, would allow for the transfer of all city-owned development rights, because the entire site is in the same zoning district. However, this would produce a building that is about 747 feet high, or about 74 stories high. For reference, the Citibank Tower on the far left is the tallest building in Long Island City at the moment, and this proposed building would be higher than the Citibank Tower. Instead of this height, we felt that a maximum height of about 500 feet would be more appropriate in the surrounding context, while still optimizing the use of city-owned development rights. Therefore, the proposed amount of development rights for transfer is equal to the difference between what the applicants can already build as-of-right and what they would be able to build at the maximum height they're proposing at 514 feet. The city-owned lot at the 2632 Jackson Avenue site would retain 101,283 square feet of development rights if these actions are approved. Again, we have not identified any viable adjacent development sites that could use these remaining development rights. And following our last review session, the Queensborough President submitted her recommendation for these applications. She recommended disapproval with conditions, requesting open space underneath the elevated roadways, community facility space, and lower-income affordable housing. Thank you.
We did the first part of the presentation because we realized that applicants work with the department's staff, sometimes over a period of months, in shaping the proposals. And what comes to the commission is a project as it has been shaped. We thought in this instance, it would be helpful to share with you how we did our homework on it and to explain, we weren't looking to cram every last square foot, but rather what we thought was appropriate, given a number of competing goals, or a number, I don't even know that they're competing, a number of goals, wanting to maximize the use of the city's air rights, but also producing a building that is appropriate for its context. And that was the purpose of that light blue shaded maximum tower that we did not support. Yes, Commissioner Levin.
I really appreciate this conversation. I wonder if I could just draw you out a little bit more. I mean, certainly with, with this image on page of this, this one. You know, your conclusion that, that about 500 feet was the right height certainly looks like it makes imminent sense, but I'm wondering how, so you obviously concluded that it maybe shouldn't be the tallest building in the neighborhood. What were the elements, what were the, can you sort of spin out your, your analysis a little bit more that, that brought you to what sounds like a very sensible conclusion?
Specifically around the heights of the building?
Specifically around the height.
Sure. So as you mentioned, in this case, we really did not see this as a building that would be appropriate to be the tallest tower in, in Long Island City, mainly because the, you know, the tower itself is quite skinny. And we also felt that in this case, there's already a surrounding context of, of towers that were at the time proposed and are now built, that were a little over 500 feet. And so we really wanted to stay within this sort of height range surrounding it.
Okay. So we weren't tempted to go just a little bit more, if we just did a little bit more, we'd just get a little bit more housing? I mean, I, I... No, that's probably the, the tension here. But sometimes, sometimes context wins. Yay.
Any other questions or comments?
Thanks.
Yeah, we enjoyed showing our homework on this one. And is there any other business before us?
No, Madam Chair. This concludes the public review session of Monday, August 6, 2018, and the time is 4:02.